Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation from Lieutenant Steve Harris, Chaplain of the Oklahoma City Fire Department. That'd be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Aiden Duncan and Matthew Pemberton of Boy Scouts Troop 201 and 6201. Please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, we give thanks to you. We thank you today that we live in a country we can openly discuss things to better our city together. We lift up the people in this room as they have things that are particularly important to them that they want to discuss and listen to, and we just pray that these good things will happen with them. Pray for the people at the front of this room that they're openly listened and to have great wisdom in the decision they make that affects all people in our city. Lord, at the end of the day, we would leave here with love and kindness and compassion for each other. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Harris, and thank you, Aiden Duncan and Matthew. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We're on Item Three, Office of the Mayor. We have appointments to Bond Advisory, Brick Town Urban Design, Civic Center Foundation, Downtown Design, Electrical Appeals and Code, Emergency Medical Services, Arts Commission, Convention and Visitors Commission, Oklahoma City Game and Fish, Oklahoma City Mary Gardens, Oklahoma City Redevelopment, Urban Renewal, Zoological Trust, and Stockyard City Urban Design. We can take all those with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, number four is items from council. This is the third of three meetings for an ordinance amendment that sort of just updates and kind of simplifies the longstanding disclosure requirements for gifts received by the elected officials up here on the horseshoe. I don't know if there's any further comment from the council, but if not, we could simply move its adoption today. Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're working on it. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, Item Five is City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so we have Chris Tatham with us here today with ETC. They presented actually a report to Embark a few months back, and we've been working to get it scheduled so we could have Chris here to provide a presentation on customer satisfaction report. I know he was in the back, and I'll give him just a second to come up this way. We also have our quarterly investment report that is in the packet. We don't have a presentation on that item, but just wanted you to know that we have that information in there. We provide quarterly. The City Treasurer's Office manages all these funds, so we do have that report in your packets. We're glad to take any questions on this. Suzanne Wickencamp, Assistant Director for Embark, is going to provide the introduction here on this study.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Suzanne Wickencamp, and I'm one of the Assistant Directors of the Public Transportation and Parking Department, Embark, and I'm pleased to be able to provide some opening remarks to our annual customer survey results. So as you know, annually, Embark conducts a customer survey, and this just helps us understand a little bit better about the areas that our customers are meeting their expectations, as well as areas that we need to focus on improving. So the survey results also inform us about our customers' needs and, excuse me, what's important to our customers in terms of service improvements that they'd like to see. That helps us allocate our resources to service demands and meet those expectations. So this all is in keeping with our aspirational goal, our vision to be world-class transportation and parking services for our customers. So with that, we have Chris Tatham here of ETC Institute, and I'll pass this over to him for sharing the survey results, but I just wanted to also mention that this survey was just conducted this past fall of 2021. So I'll hand it over to you, Chris.
Mayor, Members of the Council, it's great to be with you today. I've been working for the city for, I think, pushing on 20 years now, so I realize how much older I'm getting every time I come back. But Michael's going to help me out today. I'm just going to give you a highlight of the survey that we did last fall. It's kind of the end. I know COVID's still going on, but this survey was kind of done at the tail end when the world was still kind of shut down and starting to open up. So it'll probably be a good baseline moving forward, and has a lot of great information about how you really got through that difficult period of time. So if you're not familiar, the ETC Institute, we're actually based in Kansas City. We have offices all over the United States and even globally today. Many of you may know us because we do an annual survey, what residents think about the quality of city services, but we've also been doing work now with Embark for several years, and we are actually the primary or probably the leading firm when it comes to doing transit market survey research for everyone from systems in Los Angeles to Miami to Rhode Island across the country. So we've actually seen what's been happening the last couple of years during COVID, so I'm going to share some of those insights today. I'm going to just summarize today by going through the four major topics on the survey. We looked at what the characteristics, who's using transit, took a look at the overall satisfaction with the bus and street car system, opportunities that you can do better, and then just a few other issues that I'm going to highlight. So I'm going to get through that quickly, and if you have questions at the end, I'll be happy to answer them. So just as far as the overall purpose and methodology, it's similar to surveys that we've done in previous years. The main purpose was to better understand what people are doing, who's using it, what their perceptions are of the systems, and how to make the systems better. It's really to give you an ongoing performance measurement tool so you can really make sure that you're meeting the expectations of your riders. Remember, this is a rider survey. It's not a non-rider survey. Every couple of years, we also ask the community in general about transit purposes and what they think about the overall system, but this is a survey of your current customers. With that, the survey was administered, as I said, toward the end of the fall. We had 1,279 riders surveyed on the buses and another 252 were surveyed on the street cars. So both of these are relatively large samples. The overall results are precise with about 2.5% at the 95% level of confidence. It means we get the same results within 2.5%, 95 times out of 100, if we did the survey 100 times. Here's some of the interesting findings. You may wonder, well, who's using the system? And there are some real differences between folks who are using your bus system and the street car. So this first chart just shows the ages of people who are using it. I've included the Norman Resorts in orange, but I know you'll probably be more interested in the Oklahoma City Street Car, which is in the dark blue, and then the bus system, which is in the lighter blue. And you'll notice that street car users tend to be under 30. The higher percentage of folks are under 30 than the other groups, and you can see that you have a lot of folks between 30 and 61 using it, very similar to what many of the demographics are in the community, which is great. Next chart just shows people's race, and what you'll notice is the street car, with the exception of Hispanics, pretty much mirrors the distribution of the actual city's racial population. If you look, for example, the street cars in the dark blue, and then you'll see the census for Oklahoma City is in the middle bar in the gray, and you'll see when it comes to white, it's 58-53, black 16-14, Hispanic 11-20, and that's where we have slightly lower ridership. But for the most part, the street car seems to be getting a good cross-section of people citywide. You'll see, however, when it comes to other races, the bus, you see a higher percentage of blacks are using that compared to what we see in the actual population. Next chart just shows the incomes of folks who are using the system. What I found really interesting is that when it comes to the Oklahoma City bus, you'll see that only 2.7% of bus users earn over $50,000 a year of their annual household. So without this service, a lot of them would not be able to get to work, get to school, get to places that they need to go. Whereas when you look at the street car, it's actually more than 50,000, which is consistent with the actual census estimates for the median income for the region, which is 56,456. So again, the street car tends to be reflecting more the cross-section of the region, whereas the bus tends to be a more specialized, somewhat lower-income group that is using it. However, if you look at the next chart, which shows the reasons people using it, I think this is one of the reasons economically it's so important. You'll see that the number-one reason for bus riders in Oklahoma City is to get to and from work. So these folks are going to work. They need it. Without it, you wouldn't be able to get a significant number of people in the region to work. You can see the social dining entertainment is really at the street car level. Three out of four people are indicating that's the reason they're using it, and you can see down in Norman, it tends to be more university-related. But clearly, the data shows that this is a critical system because many of your riders would not be able to get to and from work if you didn't have the bus system in place. And the other thing that we asked is the majority of people who use both services are using it on a daily basis. You can see for the Oklahoma City bus, it's a high usage, over 50% of the people reporting it using it daily. Again, that's consistent with people going to and from work, whereas the street car, you can see the majority of people are using it less than once a month. So I think a couple of other things that we found here is just the frequency of street car usage is low because a lot of people are coming from other areas to downtown, but one of the funny things that we found is of the people who live downtown, 51% use the street car at least three to four times a week. So of the people who are living here, it's getting relatively high usage. It may look lower, but it's actually being used quite a bit by the people in the downtown area. So I think that's all the overview. A lot of good information just about who's riding it, and it's been pretty consistent over the years, but you really have two different markets that are being served. Street car is serving more the average resident citywide, whereas the bus is serving lower-income folks who really need to get to and from work, and it's their primary means of doing that. Second thing that we took a look at is just overall satisfaction. When I talked to you last year and rewarded that, that was just the beginning of COVID. You then went through COVID and expected these results to go down significantly. In fact, most of the clients that we do satisfaction surveys like this saw significant drops. There are challenges with bus drivers. There are challenges with downtime performers. You have a lot to celebrate as a city because Embark really delivered great customer service during this past year, which was a really difficult period. You'll see, just to start off, these charts here just show satisfaction with the Oklahoma City bus service. You can see they were relatively high when I presented to you last year. They stayed high. In fact, only two areas got better and just two areas got significantly worse. You can see information at bus stops and perception of accessibility of bus stops both improved. Frequency of service and courtesy of drivers both decreased, but all in all, you continued to get very, very high ratings. More interestingly, though, is your street car ratings. It was brand-new a couple of years ago. Normally, what happens is a new system opens up, and your first year or two, you get your best ratings. You're continuing to see improvements in overall satisfaction ratings among street car, which suggests that it's not just about the condition of the vehicles being new or the service being novel. People actually are being treated and getting to and where they need to go, basically in a way that meets their expectations. You'll notice of all the areas that were assessed, none had significant decreases from 2020 to 2021. In addition, several improved, one of which was the ease of your using your ticket kiosks. They were up 10%, and that was a concern that we had identified previously, so the city and Embark responded well to that. The ease-of-your-mobile fare app was up. Getting information and courtesy of fare inspectors all improved. So in a period when expectations were really challenging during COVID, the street car saw some significant improvements, and so really a lot to be commended for. Next thing just shows how you stack up, and this is perhaps some of the best findings, is what we didn't have three years ago are good national benchmarking data. We're now doing so many transit surveys, we've actually developed comparisons. So as with your city survey, you can now see how does the transit system stack up. And what you'll see on here, the dark blue shows the results for the street car. The lighter blue is the bus service. You can see Norman, and then the national average. And you'll notice that in pretty much every single category that was assessed, you're significantly above the national average. You might just pull out a couple of things, like the cleanliness of your bus shelters and platforms. You can see it 98% for the street car, 65% for the bus. I won't go through all of these, but really, you've got a great system, and your riders are happy. You're doing generally better at meeting expectations than other communities. The one thing you will notice, though, is that the courtesy of drivers, which is one area that decreased slightly compared to last year, it was down a little over five percentage points, you are actually slightly trailing the national average there. So I've identified that as an opportunity for improvement, and I know Embark's already been working on it because they've had this a little longer than you have. So as far as the next chart, this just shows the overall satisfaction, and this is the one where if you are to have a party or celebration, this is it. At the end of the day, overall, how satisfied are folks with your system? You see the national average, 58% of most bus riders in most systems say they're satisfied with the overall quality of that system. For the street car, it's 97%, which is 39% above the national average, and for your bus system, it's 78%, which is 20% above the national average. So when it comes to satisfaction of your riders and how they think you're meeting their expectations, you're doing a great job. There's opportunities to do even better, but comparatively, you're doing very, very good. As far as those opportunities to do better, which is the third topic I want to share with you, is we asked people what they thought the attributes that were most important to them when they used the bus, and then separately, the street car, and you'll see making sure they're on time, they're accessible, service frequency, courtesy of drivers, and cleanliness are the top issues. And it makes a lot of sense having the buses on time when people are using them to get to and from work. If the buses can't be relied upon, it's going to be difficult to have a reliable or get to your job reliably. The next chart actually takes the analytics into place, and this is the same thing that we've done with you for the city survey, is we look at how important each of the attributes are, and then we ask people how satisfied we are to identify some opportunities for improvement. And you'll see buses arriving on time is at the top of the list, but what I like to do is focus in sometime on what are the lower-hanging, less costly fruit that could have a big impact. So sure, you can invest billions of dollars and make the system even better, which would be great, but there are some little things that you can probably do. If you take a look at the medium priorities, courtesy of drivers, cleanliness of bus shelters, and cleanliness of buses are all in that top tier as opportunities for improvement. Your satisfaction's already very high, but I think additional efforts in those areas would help you see overall satisfaction increase over the next year or two as well. So the next thing is the street car services, and you can see having them be on time, clean, and frequent service are at the top of the list as far as the priorities for taking care of the street car. When we then did the same analytics with the street car, which is on the next chart, you'll notice that the items were similar: frequency of service, street car arriving on time, but you see cleanliness, once again, was in that top tier. So I'm not saying that that will do everything for you, but it is an area over the next year that if you focus on is likely to see or help your overall satisfaction improve. You still want to focus on those bigger picture areas that are more costly, like the frequency of service and where the service coverage is, because that's what's going to be needed to help the system grow and attract more riders, but to make your current customers happy, continuing to make sure that they feel safe, and a lot of that comes from being cleaned and being cared for. And as I hopefully understand that there's two different markets out there, one market is already using your system, so it, for the most part, goes where they need it to go. That's why they use it to go to work. There's another market who might use it if you had expanded service, but it would still need to have very similar characteristics that you see here. So a few other things just to share with you today before I wrap up. One of the things is you're rolling out of the embarkokc.com. You've done a great job rolling that out. You can see that it's the number-one tool that's being used by riders, and it's up significantly. If you look where it was in just 2020, you had 29% of riders using it. Almost half are using it now, and at that rate of growth, when the survey was done late last fall, it's probably over 50% by now. Also, the transit app usage is up significantly. 235 Ride has dropped, and you can see the Move It app. So that shift to having people use reliable apps is definitely the way that people want to go, and you're responding very, very well to that. Second thing to take a look at is nearly half of OKC bus users are making multiple transfers, and that's not new. You have a transit center, but that does create some burden, but with the transit center, having that one single transfer is ideal, and if you'll notice with this, you still have over 30% of folks who are making two or more, excuse me, it's 45% that are making two or more transfers. So again, that burden to the rider is a barrier to get people who aren't currently using the system to decide to use the system. Next thing is the percentage of folks who park. One of the things that we asked people is if they drove or rode with others, where did they park? And you'll notice that 6 in 10 of the street car users actually park a car, so they access the street cars. People are driving into downtown and then parking and then using it, and you can see it was pretty mixed about where they parked on the street, garages, or in private parking garages. But you do have 6 in 10 people are coming down who are using it while they're down here and then return back to their homes and other places. And the last question I'm going to share with you is just if the street car could be extended to other areas, which areas would you like to see it extended to? And you can see the overall ranking of the list hasn't changed a lot. You'll see Plaza District fell a little bit from last year. It was a 23% to 21% this year. Capital Hill, you can see, was a little higher last year and fell. Plaza District increased a little bit, and you see Uptown is still at the top of the list compared to where it was in 2020. So the overall ranking is very, very similar. So with that, I'll summarize, and then if you have questions, be happy to answer them. Today is a celebration. I hope it is. Maybe it was last fall when you originally got the results, but you went through COVID better than probably any other transit agency that we work with, just being candid with you. We've seen most transit agencies significant decreases in satisfaction ratings from pre-COVID to where, when this survey was done in the middle of COVID. Things are starting to get better now, but there were great challenges, and you responded to that really well. You should take great pride in the fact that overall street car satisfaction is 39% above the national average, which we now have good measures for that, and your bus service is rated 20% above the national average. But that's with your current riders, and I think that's really one of the things you have to talk about, is your current riders are very happy with what you have, but if you want to attract more or improve it, frequency of service, access, and those other issues are going to be important. In addition, you can see that things stayed or same or improved in most areas, which I already highlighted, and finally, take a look at some of those low-hanging fruit: the cleanliness issues, the courtesy of drivers. I think those are some short, immediate responses that will help improve overall satisfaction with your customers, but at the same time, frequency of service, areas of service, and things like that will also be important to continue meeting the growing needs of the community. So with that, Mayor, I don't know if there's any questions, but I'd certainly be able to answer them if there are. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris. We really appreciate the partnership and the work that you all do.
Great. I'll see you in a couple of months with the resident survey results.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, anything else you want to?
That's all that we have on City Manager Reports.
All right. Item Six is Journal of Council Proceedings. We have Items A and B we can take with one motion. All right, we got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item Seven, Request for Uncontested Continuances. We have listed on the agenda Item 11G. That will be deferred to August 30. What else do you have, Mr. City Manager?
We have several items on today, starting on page 18, under Item 11L1. We just have one item, Dilapidated Structures, Item F, 808 Northwest 116th Terrace. This is going to be stricken from the agenda. The owner has removed this structure. And then on page 18, again, on 11M1, several items on here. All of these will be stricken from the agenda. Item D, 3520 South Robinson Avenue, the owner has secured. Item M, 2100 Northwest 27th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 529 Northwest 31st Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 1005 Northwest 31st Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 1606 Northwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 2015 Northwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 2145 Northwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. And Item T, 4529 Southeast 48th Street. On page 19, Item 11N1, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item E, 3520 South Robinson Avenue. Item I, 2015 Northwest 33rd Street. Item J, 2145 Northwest 33rd Street. Item L, 4529 Southeast 48th Street. And Item O, 808 Northwest 116th Terrace. And that's all the items I've got.
All right, thank you. Item Eight, Revocable Permits and Events. We have Item 8A. This is a revocable permit with Red Coyote Running and Fitness for Red Coyote Half Marathon on October 23 along some of our city's trails, and we do have John Oslin, who has signed up to speak.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. This will be the second year for our half-marathon distance. We're excited to be moving it to the fall. It will be October 23 and based from the Devon Boathouse District. Run along the River Trail, take a detour up through Scissor Tail Park. The benefit is a culmination race of our half and full marathon training programs for the fall season, but also benefits Course for Change, which is a mentorship program for at-risk youth, as the young people learn through distance running, mentorship, and responsibility, and achieving goals. We're really excited for the second year working with that organization.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
8B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Uptown 23rd District Association to Hold Uptown Outside on July 30 along Northwest 23rd Street. And we have Kendall Bleakley and Chelsea Banks have signed up to speak.
Sure. Hi, we're with Uptown 23rd, and we are here to close 23rd Street for our inaugural event called Uptown Outside on July 30.
We're really excited about this event, so it's no secret that small business has had a hard time in the last couple of years, and our district association serves the small business community around 23rd Street. Previously, our annual event was called Uptown Uncorked, which was an internal event inside Tower Theater, which was great and successful, but we've outgrown that event, and in being very precautious about COVID go-forward and all these things, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to convert this event to an outdoor festival-type style instead, which will allow us to continue growing the success of not only the association, but the commercial district as a whole. So we're really excited to claim the street for pedestrian traffic and bike traffic and all these things, and put a live music stage at the intersection of Walker and 23rd. We have a lot of great sponsors for this event. We're really excited to see how the community comes out and supports Uptown 23rd.
All right, thank you. This is the border of Wards Two and Six, so Councilwoman Hammond, Councilwoman Cooper?
Yeah, I'll just say I'm excited to see this. It's exciting to see how different organizations are pivoting to respond to the last few years, so I know I will be excited to support. Councilperson Cooper, do you have anything?
Thanks, Counselor. Of course, excited to support. I just have a follow-up. How much of the street did we figure out will actually find itself closed during that time?
So it's Hudson to Walker, and then on Walker, closing 22nd to 25th.
Yeah, I appreciate your efforts, and we join Counselor Hammond in moving for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we'll recess council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through S we can take with one motion. A motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have Items A through D, and we actually have a presentation on Item C, so we'll go there first.
Yes, David Todd, our MAPS Program Manager, is here to make an introduction for the operator on the Family Justice Center.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. This is the preliminary operating agreement with Palomar and And if you remember, Palomar is actually in the resolution. They have been designated as the operator from the beginning because they're operating the facility now. We didn't go through a formal process, but what we do want to do is affirm that with this agreement. This agreement that you have before you today is just like what we did for the senior wellness centers in MAPS three. So we have a, an agreement that kind of outlines the basic principles of what the agreement will eventually say. And as we get the facility built, and, well, first, we got to get it located and start the project. But after we get close to finishing, it will bring you a formal agreement that will have all the details in it that we don't know right now, like boundaries and legal descriptions and things like that. But as I said, this is the process that we used with the senior wellness centers that has worked really well. And I can answer any questions about that. But I also have representatives from Palomar here today, specifically Kim Garrett is here to talk to you about Palomar.
I was just asked to come speak briefly about our MAPS four project, so thank you for having me here. We are honored to be celebrating our fifth anniversary this year, and we actually couldn't have started without the support of Oklahoma City. So thank you. Sorry. Can you flip it? Sorry. Okay, I'll just keep talking. So for those of you who are new to Palomar, we are a one-stop shop that brings together the great agencies in Oklahoma City that serve victims of violent crimes, such as domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, children who have witnessed domestic violence, and elder abuse. And so when we started five years ago, we had fifteen partner agencies, and we proudly stand together with thirty-nine agencies. And our vision with the MAPS four project is that we'll continue to expand our partnerships to help even more people. And what's neat is we actually have partnerships with the city. All of Oklahoma City Police Department, the domestic violence detectives are embedded in our building. We also have an embark driver who provides transportation for clients. And it's still not working. It's okay. I can wing it. And we also partner with Animal Welfare, who helps with the co-occurrence of domestic violence and animal abuse. Okay, next one. Sorry, everybody. Okay, here is a list of our partners, and we're certainly blessed to have partnerships with law enforcement, civil legal services, different nonprofits throughout the community, therapists, universities that help with interns and things like that. Okay, next slide. Click it one more time, please. I always think it's important to share this visual with people to better understand the prevalence of domestic violence in Oklahoma City. This is a current list of calls to nine-one-one that are domestic-related, and we're currently standing at thirty-nine thousand calls to nine-one-one in the calendar year of 2021. And I think it's really important to notice a few things about this. One, it doesn't discriminate. It overlaps into every single ward and affects people across our great city. Another thing that's important is three years ago, when I presented about map, on MAPS, the number was a little bit different, and now we're actually twenty-two percent higher in domestic-related calls to nine-one-one. And I think that's really important to know, that people in our community are really desperate for help and related to domestic violence and sexual assault. And there's a great need for our services. So what is our vision? It's to create a community healing and restoration center where we can expand our different programs and partnerships and help even more survivors and their children. Our current facility is temporary, and our numbers are increasing significantly. We've already helped over seventeen thousand survivors, and we've had over a hundred fifty thousand services provided, which is significant when you think about the type of work we're doing. So our goal is to expand our services, have programs, add twenty-four-hour services, and add an array of different services that we can't provide now because of our building limitations. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of our vision is bringing a therapy and healing center. Right now, we have great partnerships with nonprofits who provide therapy services, but the demand is so significant, we can't meet the need. And so our goal is to bring in art and play therapy agencies who can provide that, psychiatry services, grief and loss services, and peer support model. And I've also done an asterisk on these, so you can see what the evolution will be with MAPS four programming. We also acknowledge that domestic violence has a profound impact on children who witness domestic violence, and so we're really committed to breaking that generational cycle of violence. And we want to add a trauma-informed daycare for children who can get really trauma-informed healing when they're going through our services and while the parent is rebuilding in a safe and healthy home. We want to add wellness exams for children. And then we also want to expand our animal advocacy program. There's a co-occurrence between domestic violence and animal abuse. That's why we partner with Animal Welfare, and we're actually really grateful for that partnership because it's really innovative and it's changing things for families. Next slide, please. We also have had a great demand from our clients to add faith-based services and a chaplaincy program to help them in their journey to healing. And so we want to have a space that's designed specifically for that, to meet our clients' needs. And we also acknowledge the overlap into medical care. That is really important for survivors, and so we want to add a pharmacy, a lab, and a medical clinic to help meet their needs, especially, sad to say, but we've been seeing a lot of strangulation, which is one of the highest lethality markers that we know in this field, and we see it significantly. We see it with children even, and we need to expand our programming to be able to do medical exams to identify that. We also want to be able to have secure and welcoming services for, again, the clients that we've had. We've had over fifty-two thousand visits. If you saw our little building, the building that could, you'd be shocked at what we've been able to accomplish in this space. And again, we've had over a hundred and actually eighty-two thousand services provided to clients. And we also envision a training center. Right now, we're pretty limited in the space where the community can't come in and access it because of safety measures. And so we want to have a space where the public can come in, do community events, and also have a secure, safe space for clients to receive services. So that is the overall vision. Does anybody have any questions?
A question and a comment. At the state level of government, what similar services exist, if any at all?
At the state level of government?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, because I remember during your MAPS presentation, you, and feel free to correct me where I'm wrong here, I remember Oklahoma having some significantly higher-than-average statistics, like statewide statistics. So I'm curious, while I'm so happy and proud to be a part of what we're doing at the city level, I'm just curious, like statewide, what similar sort of Palomar, YWCA services might exist?
So there are three other collaborative models in the state. There's one in Tulsa, and there's one in El Reno, and they're Family Justice Center models, where they co-locate the great agencies that they work with and do a collaborative model to respond to crimes.
And my comment is, again, taking us back to MAPS four. It was especially upsetting to see the map right now, because as I said back then, as someone who was a child who grew up in a home witnessing domestic violence, I just can't thank you all enough, people who made this possible. When I toured your facility, it was, it was like a level of healing I guess I, in a lot of ways, didn't know I needed. I didn't understand the significance of what it would mean for a child to be in that safe space, having experienced domestic violence in the home. Even if they didn't experience the abuse, they saw their parent guardian, and it was just such a cathartic healing thing. I'll also say, you know, seeing that map, it's upsetting, and I'm going to have to, like, process it right now. I'm still a person that when I hear people yelling, it hurts, and I, it takes me back there. And I'm just so happy we're moving in a healthier direction. Just thank you. Just thank you so much.
Thank you. I will say that we've actually already helped thirty-five hundred and duplicated children, and you think they flee with nothing but the clothes on their back, and it's really distressing and chaotic for these kiddos. And they've been so safe at Palomar that they've had birthdays there, requested to have birthdays in our space, which I think is a huge testament to the work that we're doing in rebuilding our community.
Well, I just, I just didn't have that. And a lot of kids who would have grown up in the eighties and nineties like me, we wouldn't have, so just a million thanks.
I'd like to echo Councilman Cooper's thank you and gratitude for what you're doing. Could you also tell me if any of our bond funds are going to be used in some of the different facilities that we have, like in Canadian County, that service a lot of the Oklahoma City residents as well?
Not that I know of, but if you're interested, I'm interested.
Being that Oklahoma City is the largest city in Canadian County, and we are continuing to grow and see just record growth in that area, I'd like to see if we can move anything into that, that department. I think we have a, it's called Cardinal Point in, in Canadian County. So if there's, if there's a way that we can actually help out in that, in that system and in that facility as well, I'd like to see something there, too. But thank you.
The MAPS four program is dedicated to the Family Justice Center that Palomar serves in right now. So that's all the funds that are dedicated at this point, and that's where those funds will go.
Okay.
But I do appreciate Kim's partnership, and this is her vision. You know, Palomar was her vision, but just the partnership in the MAPS four program and how we're moving this forward, and I do really do appreciate it. Tricia Evers, Chairman of the Board there, is here, and I really appreciate their leadership in the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim. All right, any other comments or questions on that item? Hearing none, we could adopt the OCPPA docket, which is items A through D. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page five of your printed agenda, item nine, the consent docket. And there are scheduled presentations for item R, item C-O, and that is it. Is there anything else that a member of council wants to pull out for separate vote or separate discussion?
Yes, I'd like item W, just for discussion.
Okay.
And item C-O, can we do a separate vote on that, please?
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, I think we'll just take them in order, and so that means the presentation at item R. But R is one of yours.
Yeah, so Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager, is going to give us a quick presentation on this project. It's an ARPA-funded project, and this is the RFP part of it, so we've got a distance to go with this, but I'll let Aubrey give us a presentation on this.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much, Aubrey McDermott. As you know, we adopted a plan for the use of our fiscal recovery funds back in 2021, and I'm very happy and proud that council's allocated eight-point-two-five million dollars for affordable housing as part of our city ARPA funding. So our goal is to leverage these fiscal recovery funds so that we can respond to the greatest housing needs that we have in our community. This RFP targets a subset of the households that meet the ARPA eligibility criteria. And this is, this is something that I think really helps us accomplish the goals that were set forth in our 2021 Housing Affordability Study, which projected we have a lot of needs for this range of, of housing. It projected we have a gap of forty-four thousand affordable housing units in our community. And the services with those housing units, such as programs like down payment assistance, in addition to the cost of construction and rehab of housing units, is estimated to total about one-point-three billion dollars. So this eight-point-five million dollars is, is very much needed and will be very much appreciated. Also, increasing the supply of affordable housing was identified in our strategies to address homelessness as one of the most important measures that we could take, that we could do as a housing-first community. So what this is, as Craig mentioned, is that we are issuing our request for proposals so that developers and nonprofits can solicit projects that meet our ARPA guidelines, which are set forth in the RFP. So those guidelines include that housing serves low-to-moderate-income residents, that the projects that meet certain national programs are automatically qualified. So if they meet the eligibility requirements for the National Housing Trust Fund or the Home Program, which stands for Home Investment Partnership Program, can automatically be eligible to submit for these ARPA funds. Also, the development of just any type of affordable housing, building additional rental units, rehab of existing rental units, as long as the households are under sixty percent of the area median income, would qualify for these funds. Projects like development of transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, housing for youth, homeless, or other special needs populations are going to be elevated in consideration. And one of the main things with these ARPA funds is that the projects must be contracted and in progress by December 2024 and completed by December 2026. Therefore, we're encouraging shovel-ready projects, projects that are easy to get off the ground and easy to get completed within that timeframe. So with this, with this project, the planning department will be administering the process. They will receive questions from proposers through the electronic bidding system through August third, and then the proposals are due by four PM on August seventeenth. The standard process for a selection committee is set forth in the RFP. The planning department will put together a comprehensive group of people to review the proposals based on the criteria set forth in the RFP. And the selection committee could select one or many proposers to try to maximize the number of units that we can get out that are qualified developers. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Aubrey.
Thank you.
Okay, item W, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I just wanted a little bit more information about this application, and, because as I was reading the memo, it said some other redevelopment sites have been identified for, that could require assistance. And I'm just curious if we have, like, a set number of sites that we anticipate this funding going towards, or if, once we get, if we are approved for this grant, if, if it just becomes kind of an open RFP process and those folks can apply, or if it will be open to a wider array of applicants?
Hi, my name is Amanda Elwine. I manage the Cities Brownfall Program. So this three-point-nine million, it is a, it will go into a revolving loan fund, and so it will be open to, our primary focus is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. That's what we put in our application. We're also focusing on opportunity zones. We did identify approximately a hundred and fifty sites that we know may have issues, or there's a perception that they have issues that we might focus on. That does not limit us if we have a new project come up, and they're interested in receiving assistance from the Brownfall Program. They just need to contact us. We do have a requirement to loan half of this money, and half of it can go out as subgrants to nonprofit organizations.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. That's great information.
Okay, and that brings us to item C-O, and we're going to do a separate vote on that, but first, we're going to have a presentation.
Yeah, Kenny Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development will introduce the presentation here.
Good morning, Kenny Soodle with the Alliance, and it's very good to see all of you, and I'm excited today to bring a, a project that we've been working on. And today, there, in front of you, this resolution would introduce and set for final consideration on August second, allocation from TIFF nine, which is the Northeast Renaissance TIFF, to go towards an approximately twenty-six million dollar boutique hotel project on Northeast Twenty-third Street. So I'm very excited to talk about this and kind of look at continuing the momentum on Northeast Twenty-third. I am going to have the developer come up in a minute. Sandino Thompson's going to give a presentation and give you more information and details about the project itself, but I just wanted to give a few words about the allocation and make sure that we're clear about what this potentially authorizes. So this would provide an allocation of three-point-eight-eight million dollars from TIFF nine. In order to close this deal, the developer is, is working with New Markets Tax Credits and the rest of their capital stack. They've requested that this money be put in upfront. So I do want to be clear that this request would be to have money upfront. The funds, as authorized in this resolution, would be loaned from the GOLP funds and then repaid with the incremental revenues. I do want to mention, there's something in there that talks about the, that the GOLP funds could potentially be written off in the future. That is not something for the developer. That is something that we do typically to give the city flexibility, should there ever be a future shortfall, in being able to use. be a future shortfall, and being able to use repay with general fund or look at, you know, writing that off in the future. So what I'd like to say is, you know, since this is not the pay-in-pay-out type of structure, you know, we've worked with the developer, we've looked at the projections, we've tried to be very conservative, and I do want to be upfront that there is a scenario where it could be possible that the funds provided, that the increment could be a little bit short from that on some of the scenarios we've looked at. But we've worked with the developer, and they're going to provide some additional guarantees to make up that gap should that occur, and I think that that was, you know, really shows their commitment to the project. In addition, like we've done with many other projects, when we have money going upfront, we also have asked the developer to provide a completion guarantee. So these are all things that will come back in the economic development agreement, but they would also be providing a completion guarantee to ensure that the hotel gets built. So with, and we've done that on many other projects, like the Omni or the First National or other catalytic transformational projects. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sandino, let him give a presentation, and we'll be happy to take any questions that you may have after that.
Good morning, council. Appreciate you all allowing us to be here today and your continued support for the efforts to revitalize Northeast Oklahoma City and specifically Northeast 23rd Street. So I'll present a little bit. This project will essentially be the third phase of the East Point development. Back in 2017, we came to this body and asked for your support in really spearheading the Northeast Renaissance efforts with the development of East Point. So phases one and two took place at that point. You all supported us with both TIF, but a lot of support from the City of Oklahoma City, the Planning Department, a lot of the other agencies to get that project off and going. It's resulted in representative retail being established and submitted in Northeast 23rd, and that happened even during a pandemic. It also resulted in the expansion of access of medical care and medical access in Northeast Oklahoma City. Obviously, 7311 is one of the ZIP codes with the lowest socioeconomic and health outcomes in the entire state, so we were able to maintain and expand access to healthcare through the East Point, through that phase one and two of the East Point development. So those developments have culminated in a lot of attention, a lot of good momentum for overall revitalization efforts in Northeast Oklahoma City. We have won both local, national, and even international awards for the approach to those projects, which included inclusive, inclusivity strategies, strategies to engage with the surrounding community and make sure that people are part of the development and part of what was taking place. The project resulted in representative retail, 20,000 square foot of that, 90, sorry, 20,000 square foot of representative retail, 90% black-owned businesses in the heart of the African-American community in Oklahoma City, over 50% of those businesses, woman-owned businesses as well, and 15% ownership for those who sign long-term leases in the project. So we have a vested interest with community stakeholders and entrepreneurs and business folks in engaging in what's happening on Northeast 23rd Street. What we learned from the first two phases is really what is leading us to the request today and the project that's before you, and that's the third phase of the East Point development. We looked at a couple of different approaches on what we could do with the last parcel of land that was a part of this project. We looked at expanding retail, but we are believers in incremental development, and we are believers in sort of incremental revitalization, and we wanted to see massing. We're starting to see this part of Northeast 23rd Street really reclaiming its stake as a gathering point and a connection point. Events like Juneteenth and things like that have been taking place there the last couple of years. A lot of organizing through the pandemic for the community at East Point and some of the surrounding areas, and we started to see other development in the surrounding area. We know we have MAPS investments at 23rd and Martin Luther King with the Clara Luper Center. So we're starting to see a lot of momentum coming together. We want to keep the massing, the pedestrian friendliness. I enjoyed the Embark presentation because that access to public transit, we have several bus stops, things like that that we're thinking through. I say all that to say, when we started thinking about what was next in this development, we really landed on this type of approach. It's really a catalytic hospitality approach. We didn't see massing retail, we didn't see massing even multifamily at this point in that market being conducive to the next step of development, and we knew it needed to be new construction. So what we're proposing is approximately 60,000 square feet hospitality, so it will be 77 key hotel rooms with seven to eight 600-square-foot micro-retail bays facing the street on the ground floor. And I want to highlight that aspect because it's really actually important to what we see in continuing the momentum for economic development and access to small business development entrepreneurship in Northeast Oklahoma City. These micro-retail bays will essentially be targeted to help incubate small businesses. So even at East Point with the representative retail and the overall success that we've had, we had a lot of challenges with small businesses in regards to access to capital, to being able to get loans, being able to get the right kind of valuations, even existing businesses who were looking to expand in the east side or from the east side and looking to grow their business there had challenges. This micro-retail will actually allow for us to set businesses up, you know, 20% of businesses in the first year that they open up will fail. This is set up to allow businesses to succeed or fail without it being a large setback for them. Reason for the micro-spaces is we can kind of control the economics of that. We think seven of those spaces set up as incubators. Two to three of the spaces will have access to a commercial kitchen, so they'll be able to run small food and beverage operations, will complement the hotel services. So the hotel will be a 77-key hotel, again, have rooftop event space that will be able to accommodate small weddings, receptions, banquets, things of that nature. There is a deficit of those kinds of services essentially between the Health Science Center and Embassy Suites, and really going to the Class and Curve area. So on the northeast side, if we want to have places to gather and places to have those kind of activities, there's a deficit of those things. There's a deficit of hotel rooms. So we are, will be the closest hotel hospitality service to the Adventure District, which is a pretty large driver of tourist activity and local economic activity with the casino in Remington Park there, with the Softball Hall of Fame, the zoo amphitheater, the Science Museum, and other factors. So we're planning to be able to capture some of that traffic in that space that we're already seeing travel through East Point when those events and things are happening. The zoo amphitheater is another thing that draws people to that side of town. We're also expecting to attract the staycation sort of wave of people wanting to sort of just get out, or regional sort of migration to, or I should say, regional tourism to Oklahoma City. When you start thinking about people doing family reunions, local events, small conventions and things of that nature, for folks invested, the stakeholders in the northeast side, this will be a place where they can connect to. We expect to engage with the state capitol activity, and we've already had sort of positive feedback from some of the faith-based community and others, because they tend to have conventions and activities that travel. Now we'll have a place on the northeast side to support those kinds of activities. This is really a boutique-scale hotel, and it's intentional in its design. 77 rooms is not a lot, because we are pursuing New Market Tax Credits. It'll allow us to be very aggressive on our marketing and our approach to pricing and conservative, as Kenny said, on the business model. So we're being able to anticipate filling those rooms up with those types of activities and really seeing that the draw of the rooms pull more activity towards Northeast Oklahoma City. Our vision for this, and our vision for these three phases of East Point in this final phase, is that it will continue to catalyze surrounding development. So we hope these small businesses that are incubated in the retail space actually grow in and expand into businesses that can occupy larger spaces along Northeast 23rd Street, and we hope that the traffic that this generates helps to create the sort of eyeballs and build up the ecosystem that will drive economic opportunity. So the project team is a mix of the team that I partnered with on the original two phases of the East Point development. We have some really unique expertise to the market in the hospitality space, in David Davis and Dar Yosri, and then have caught, excuse me?
Where are my faces?
We'll get there. So I have my, and then I also have, in this project, the pleasure of partnering with a couple of tenants, a couple of tenants from East Point who have chosen to do business together, relocated there as that development was coming out, and really are looking to grow and engage in the development sort of ecosystem on the northeast side. So Erica Emery and Monique Short are two owners of Monarch Construction. It's a woman-owned minority construction company. They have been growing their business, and as we talked about, this project had an interest in participating in the construction and the design phase and bringing their expertise to that. And then Cordell Love is a creative, small-business entrepreneur, veteran, who had located in the East Point development when he saw the activity and things like that happening. He set up in a small space to do an event space, actually grew during the pandemic into a little bit larger space, and are now, and Cordell is now looking at getting into the real estate development space. He wants to learn about it. One of the things that was important for us, as we talked about East Point, we talked about development overall on the northeast side, was making sure that it was accessible to other folks. So there is a large effort by Northeast Renaissance, the Alliance for Economic Development and others, ULI, to support developing minority and other incremental developers in the space, and Cordell is sort of representative of that effort, so he is also a development partner in the project. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to entertain any questions or feedback.
I've got a quick question. You mentioned, on your prior project, you mentioned 15% tenant ownership?
Yes, sir.
Can you just go over at a very high level just how that works, what that looks like?
I realize, I think Joanna was giving me the, I can go long, so I will try and be short. So 15% ownership is one of the things that captured the attention of several national real estate development and economic development interests. So what we did was, we set an agreement for a long-term lease. We're going to allow, we included in our capital stack 15% set aside for tenants to be owners. So what they got was 15% prorata. So if I had 1,000 square feet, 15% of that square, 150 square feet worth of that ownership, right? So I had 1,000 square feet, I'm sorry, I have 15% ownership of that 1,000 square feet. The way that worked is, we had overall units in the development, and then they come in as partners with their prorata share of units according to the amount of square feet that they had. The idea was that in any event, so in exit events, which at this point will be far down the future because of our agreements and support from the city, so in an exit event, if we refinanced after 10 years, that ownership is memorialized. So the ownership is given in a warrant immediately. After 10 years, that ownership is memorialized, and we essentially have our tenants as partners in the development. So if we exit, they get their share of whatever the proceeds are. When the project starts to cash flow positive and we're close to stabilization on this project, they will get their prorata share of the distributions. What that really means is that in real estate, the goal is over time for the value of your project to appreciate, and as it appreciates, they participate in the value capture that really the tenants are helping us to create, if that makes sense.
I've got a couple of questions for Kenny, if I could, please.
Yep.
You mentioned that this is a $3.8 million upfront payment, and I know in the past we've done things like this to protect our investment. We've had performance guarantees, personal guarantees, other sets of protection. So number one, can you go into a little more detail on explaining that? And then secondly, you mentioned additional financing, and can you explain the additional, the potential for additional financing and the impact that that could have on the property with a second or third mortgage?
So when the city, you know, Joanna and I started looking at this and working on it, you know, one of the things we always do is kind of look at projections and kind of look at, you know, developers have scenarios, we look at, you know, kind of what are more stress scenarios or more conservative scenarios, and that's part of looking at, we took a really conservative approach and said, what if the tax assessor assesses it at a really low level? What would that generate? And started looking at that in order to kind of determine the minimum tax payments that would come forward in an economic development agreement later on. That's where we kind of looked at, I think, under a very conservative scenario, there could potentially be maybe about a $400,000 gap between what might be generated in property taxes over the life of this TIF, because we have 17 years left on the TIF versus, you know, the 3.8. And that's where the developers, when we went back to them with that, they stepped up and said, we're willing to put something in to guarantee additional payments in lieu of taxes above and beyond, you know, to make up that gap. So that's really what we're talking about. Now, that one would be like a personal guarantee and a, it would, we don't have all those details worked out, but it would likely be something that would be memorialized in the deed to the property.
And that's something we're going to take a look at.
Yes.
Okay.
The other portion I'm in-
That would be included in the EDA, right?
Yes.
In the economic development agreement.
Sure.
The other portion we talked about was just the normal completion guarantee that since funds are going in upfront, ensuring that, you know, a project doesn't get half-built and the city is out money upfront, and, you know, but there's always, with any project, there's construction risk until the project's completed. So that's really the other area we talked about.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if I might, just because we don't do a ton of these, I know that you all supported the New Market Tax Credits application at Northeast 36th and Kelly, or sorry, Northeast 36th and Lincoln. So with the New Market Tax Credit structure, a lot of these requirements that we're, I won't say happy, but we acknowledge that we have to engage with. I'm never happy to sort of guarantee, do personal guarantees, but I'm definitely willing for this project. With New Market Tax Credits, that structure will also require quite a bit of oversight, so some of that is built into the deal, and we're honestly responding a little bit to some of the covenants and the requirements that are being put out. But we're also happy to make sure, as, I mean, citizens of Oklahoma City and people who are invested, that we're doing the things that, we're doing our part to sort of follow up with the commitment that you all are making.
Yeah, so the Section 108 tax credits, are something similar to what we did with the Skirvin Hotel, correct?
So I'm not sure about the Skirvin, but I know that the New Market Tax Credits that we're pursuing are very similar to the 36th and Lincoln project at only.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in addition, I think there's street enhancements that are going on Northeast 23rd Street that will also help, you know, just kind of pave that gateway, so that's another part of the, not with, specifically with this project, it's something we're doing anyway, but it'll help with this project.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Kim, for your time.
Thank you, Sandino. It's a very exciting project. We're very excited to see East Point development continue. We do have one person who signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Don't start my time now, you know, I just got up here now. All right, tell me when to start going, ready? Go. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael C. Washington, Chief Perro Legal, 2900 Northeast 18th Street with three ones on the back. Now then. Well, now, apparently, this justification is moving swiftly through the east side. Now, just walked in, I'm kind of a little bit off with my delivery, but you can best believe, like everybody, I stay ready to keep on getting ready, because I never know what's coming up. Now then. We want this Hamlet Hotel to be built on the northeast side, right in the heart of where I live, by the way, right? Okay, now, we already know this has to be promoted, more so with the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, because we know the money starts there, everyone, don't worry. Okay, now, now then. I do not agree with this. No one approached me first, being an advocate for the civil rights movement here in the state of Oklahoma, and I seem to feel that kind of slighted, that they would disregard me, and I lived there. Now then, anytime there are moves made like this here, I will be approached, and there will be no improvement whatsoever, let's understand that, will you? Now then, pardon my offense. Now then. This $7.105.26, $2,067 million in this new market credit, so-called district, I didn't even know about that. I need to be contacted when things like this are available so that I can discuss it, and maybe if I approve it, we may get things done. Now, now you want to borrow $3,880,000 from the tax increment finance that I saw, I've been told there's no money there. What did this suddenly fly into? Did this suddenly create itself? Somebody's hiding money? Yes. Tell you I stay ready to keep on getting ready. Now, I've said to you that this should be on hell and tabled until I've had a better opportunity to look into it. Other than that, there may be some repercussions of a civil rights lawsuit being filed, because I don't know the hidden measures, I don't know the hidden meaning, I don't care about black faces, because I am not a racist.
30 seconds, please.
30 seconds, I just got it, oh, man. Okay. But, so that goes to show you, I don't target any person, race, creed, or color. I target business, freedom, justice, and equality, truth, love, and happiness. Other than that... You say how many, you only got 30 seconds left? Okay, 30 seconds.
10 left.
I thought you said 30, it's just time. Well, let me go. Well, let me go. Hasta la vista, baby, because I will be back. Have a great morning.
All right. A separate vote was requested on this item, so if there's no further discussion-
I'll move for approval.
We can do that now. So this is just for item nine CO. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we are back on the remainder now of the consent docket. There are no further presentations or items we had pulled out, so we can adopt the rest of the consent docket in its entirety. A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item ten is the concurrence docket. We have items A through G we could take with one motion. A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And item eleven, items requiring separate votes. Item A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2941 East Britton Road going from R1 to C3. I don't know if anybody, Councilwoman Nice is returning. Why don't we skip over that for now, and let me see if we can make sure she knows that we're past that item. Item B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 4404, 4408, 4420, and 4428 Southeast 154th Street going from AA to RA2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
We have actually, and I'll just say this Evergreen statement, we have no one who's signed up to speak on any zoning cases.
Great. Thank you. This is just basically a lot split, four-way lot split over off of 154th and Sunny Lane. It was recommended for approval by staff as well as unanimously by the planning commission. So unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and motion for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. This is item B.
Where are we at? Sorry, I just walked in like something wrong. Whoa, whoa.
What? What?
I didn't know where we are.
Uh, now, we're on eleven, eleven B.
Okay.
This is the vote on eleven B. Passes unanimously. Now, we're going to go back to eleven A. This is the ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2941 East Britton Road going from R1 to C3. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. With that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Eleven C, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1513 Southeast Thirty-Ninth going from C3 to I2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a change to industrial in an area that's basically surrounded by industrial. Staff recommended approval along with planning commission, so without any questions, I'll move for its approval.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eleven D, this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1801 South Sarah Road going from PUD 1043, PUD 791, and R2 to R1 and R2. Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. No protests. I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eleven E, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 12601 Northwestern Avenue going from R1 to PUD 1887. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, and the purpose of this request is to permit a modified residential development. And I know that the applicant and the representative for the applicant is, they are both present, but we have spoken, and I know there are a couple TEs. So with this, we'll go ahead and move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eleven F is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 13665 Southeast Fifty-Ninth going from AA to PUD 1896. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that's requesting a lot split on a nine-and-a-half acre lot, recommended for approval. So without any questions, I'll go ahead and motion for its approval.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. All right. Eleven G was previously deferred, which brings us to eleven H, which is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 814 North Douglas Avenue going from R3 to SPOD 1403. This was deferred from July 5th. Councilwoman Hannah.
Yes, this is an infill project to permit to single-family units on one lot, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Eleven I is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 12101 North Midwest Boulevard going from AA to SPOD 1406. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Thank you. This, the purpose of this request is to permit a single-family residence, so I will move for approval for this application.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eleven J is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 2825 South Mustang Road going from AA to SPOD 1412. Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. There were no protests at planning, and seeing none today, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. We're now at eleven K. This is the third meeting on this proposed ordinance. This relates to human rights and reestablishes the Oklahoma City Human Rights Commission. We have some residents who've signed up to speak, so I think we'll go there first. And what I will do is I'll announce the name, and then I'll also announce the name of the person who will follow that person, so they can maybe make their way close to the front and be ready without too much delay, so we can get through all the speakers. We'll begin with Linda Curtis, who will be followed by Kristin Schubel.
Okay, I'm Linda Curtis. I'm a leader in the-
Oh, and I should also say, Evergreen statement, everyone state your name and address-
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And your remarks must be three minutes or less, and Amy will give you a thirty-second warning. Sorry.
Okay. I am Linda Curtis. I am at 11416 Fluff Creek Drive, Ward Eight. And I am here speaking in behalf probably of, as a mother, as a grandmother, and a soon-to-be great-grandmother. I would oppose this new commission. I don't think that this is something we need to do. I feel that it's bringing up even more, I guess, contrast between ethnicities, races, religions, whatever, and I don't think we need that. We have come a long way, and I'm old enough to see that, that we have made very, a lot of improvements in our country, and I'd like to not bring up more problems that's going to cause, you know, more contention. And I feel that's what this commission would do. And I would urge that it would not be voted for. We don't need another commission for more money to go into, and as a widow, and as those I speak for, those elderly, it's, you know, we don't need to be putting our money into more things that we already have covered by our judges and those sorts of things. And I think it may be a slap in the face of our forefathers and maybe our veterans who have fought and fought together with, you know, we don't, as a child, we don't even look at race or religion or, they're just looking for love, and I think that's what we need to do. We need to really see what our likes are and not what our differences are. And I felt that's what this commission would do if we passed it. And so I would urge you to vote no, not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin Schubel, followed by Carol Hefner.
I'm Kristin Schubel. I live at 4801 Sterling Court, now Ward Two, formerly Ward One. I'm here to speak in favor of the Human Rights Commission, and I wanted to prepare something, but I just, I'm not organized enough. I feel like I would love to have a dialogue with the last lady, because I felt for some of her points, I'm also someone who doesn't like discord very much. I wish we could all get in a kumbaya circle and love each other and all that good stuff. Unfortunately, we inherit a very complicated past, and some people would argue, and I would agree with them a hundred percent, that we still have baggage, serious baggage from those days. We have come a long way, but I actually read that long 21CP report, and I remember them saying that there clearly were things in paper, at the very least, and also in action, that showed specifically the OKC Police Department, but also just OKC in general, was making efforts to be inclusive and to learn from past mistakes. But they also said that this, these efforts weren't real well-known to the community, and that multiple people in the community reported feeling discriminated against, not feeling like they could trust the city. And I think the perfect response to that is the Human Rights Commission, because it's transparent. Everyone can see what's going on. Everyone coming forward with an issue, we can watch on YouTube what those are. This is within our power. I mean, it's kind of a sad thing that the Human Rights Commission went away in the first place, but the fact that it did actually shows that if, for whatever reason, this train were to get wildly off course, we can do something about it. We're not powerless. And I just, I would urge those who are fearful about this commission to, instead of think or worry that it's all about blaming people and creating hate, I actually, I very much think the opposite. I really think it is intended to unite people and make people feel like they're, like everyone is part of the community, no matter what your religious background, your race, age, et cetera. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Hefner, followed by Robert Hefner.
Good morning. I am Carol Hefner, 3001 Northwest 168th Court in Oklahoma City. Ward Eight is my ward. My family happens to be comprised of multiple races. We have varied religious backgrounds as well, but all agree that there are far more pressing issues that our city should be focused upon, which can positively impact our homes, families, and businesses in unity and in unison. This would provide for maintaining our streets, providing safety with better citywide lighting plans, deterring crime through multiple applications, and adding to our deteriorating police force to protect and defend our homes and businesses. These are items that every single Oklahoma City citizen deserves, regardless of their persuasions. Money has been put forth toward this Human Rights Commission. That money should be put toward things that impact and positively impact every single person in this community. It is apparent that we've had a record low in police academy enrollment and graduation. We lack almost three hundred officers to respond and patrol our streets. They are stretched thin. Crime is up. As a matter of fact, I spoke to police officers on my way here, they were en route to an active shooting. We've had fifty homicides in this city, and we have multiple robberies commencing every day. We've had the media actually alert our citizens that we are having multiple and extreme robbery attempts across their businesses and their homes, and they are alerting the public. This is a problem. We need our police force reinforced with those monies. Recent hiring by the city manager of the position of diversity and quality and inclusion is the second such position in the city of Oklahoma City government structure. These two individuals are paid handsomely. The state of Oklahoma offers remedy that's been established and functions for all through the federally funded EEOC and the Attorney General's Office, thereby addressing everything that goes on with regard to human rights across our state and within our city. Oklahoma City is not Detroit, LA, San Francisco, Seattle, Portland, or Chicago, the cities that some on this horseshoe would like to emulate. Why are we trying to create and follow other liberal cities which have established more strife through these groups since their human rights commissions have been created? Over the decades, these commissions have done little to nothing to abrogate or neutralize differences. They have exasperated the situation and caused segregation, mistrust amongst different people groups, and disharmony. The attempt to establish a Human Rights Commission in this city is an agenda item added to the budget for a necessary purpose. As a matter of fact, it adds a layer of bureaucracy and potential confusion for those who are honestly seeking relief for their grievances. It is misleading and potentially gives opportunity to destructive characters acting for divisive purposes. You can see within this chamber, the attempt to stir the division is on display. Why not healing or unifying for our city? So what's really the objective? Let's continue to focus on city services that truly need our attention, providing for every single citizen. Mark Stonecypher, my councilman, I urge you to vote no, and others who have given any form of consideration for this HRC creation, please vote no, I urge you. It's been unproven before, in the 1990s was dissolved-
For overtime.
...and continues to be a poor idea everywhere else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert Hefner, followed by Max Wolfley. And again, after Mr. Hefner will be Max Wolfley.
Good morning. I'm Robert Hefner. I'm a citizen of Ward Eight. My councilman is Mark Stonecypher. Oklahoma City does not need to add a Human Rights Commission to its already bulging administrative state of over a hundred boards, trusts, and commissions. All this does is push civil government further away from we, the people, into a bureaucratic administrative state where the people no longer have a vote. Laws and remedies exist to the State Civil Rights Division and Attorney General's Office. All violations, regardless of whether your municipality has such a commission, must eventually be litigated through the Attorney General's Office. In a recent interview I personally conducted with the Civil Rights Division, there are no backlog cases. They have sufficient resources to process all violations. The Civil Rights Division has not received any complaints from this council and the City of Oklahoma City in regards to addressing violations. Directly from their website, it reads, quote, "The Office of Civil Rights Enforcement is dedicated to enforcing Oklahoma's anti-discrimination laws, providing educational resources, and partnering with the public to advance the causes of civil rights positively and proactively for the equal benefit and enjoyment of all Oklahomans." So why does Oklahoma City need a Human Rights Commission? The short answer, it doesn't. It has become apparent that some on the council have ulterior motives in pushing forward such a commission than what is being represented, perhaps to continue to push liberal progressive policies that cater to the LBGQ community, to bash our police, to bash the Christian community, bash our founding fathers as white supremacists, and declare that our Creator in the Declaration of Independence is not the God of the Bible, as James Cooper did on June 7th, without any pushback from anyone on this horseshoe. What other agendas does this commission that is going to be created that's beyond the reach of the people? Where is this headed? When Nikki Nice presented her testimony on that same day on why we needed a commission based on a poll taken by an organization called OKC4HR, no one on the council could provide me with the details of this poll, and so why are we basing this entire Human Rights Commission on a poll that is not available to the public? A poll paid for and undertaken by an entity that publicly states that they are, quote, "Support Black Lives Banner's mission," unquote, which in turn states, quote, "Mission is to eradicate-" in turn states, quote, "Mission is to eradicate white supremacy," unquote.
30 seconds, please.
My councilman, Mark Stonecypher, and his colleague, Todd Stone, who both sit on the task force, have helped write the language bounding the governing documents of this commission, and both admit that the language contained in the proposed Human Rights Commission has been stripped of any power and has no teeth. Is this any reason to support a Human Rights Commission? Are we playing games on this horseshoe? And are we having political favoritism going on in this horseshoe? I ask this council to vote no. And equally, I ask you, Mark Stonecypher, to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Wolfley, followed by Seth Ratt.
Max Wolfley, followed by Seth Ratt. Okay. Max Wolfley, I live at 8300 South Westminster Road in southeast Oklahoma City. My wife and I raised eight children in that, in that house. And for that reason, over the past 40 years, I've seen way too many old Disney movies. And we pretty well wore out our VHS copy of Pollyanna. If you haven't seen that movie, it's about a town where everybody can't seem to get along, okay? They're all looking for fault in each other. And the turning point in the movie is when Pollyanna opens up the locket that her father had given her, reads the inscription, which says, "If you look for the bad in mankind expecting to find it, you will surely, you surely will." And from that point on, okay, the pastor realizes that, hey, he needs, he needs to get his congregation and the town, and he leads them in looking for the good in their neighbors. And it totally transforms the town. They become known as the Glad Town after that. It seems to me that this commission is kind of working in the opposite direction of that. And, you know, I tell you, I have no doubt that this commission will find problems because that's what it's set up to do. The, you know, if it doesn't find problems, then it'll go out of existence. And so it needs to, just to justify itself. You know, so with your vote, you can put us on a, on a path towards division and strife, or you can put us on a course towards being a city where people look for the good in their neighbors. And I hope that's not too Pollyanna-ish. So thanks.
Thank you. Seth Ratt, followed by George Teague.
Hi, my name is Seth Ratt. I live in Ward Six at 200 North Harvey Avenue. I just wanted to get up and speak in favor of the commission. I had the privilege of serving on the task force with Councilman Nice and the other task force members. I was like, I think that we did a lot of work over the last year and a half to go through state statute, go through the previous Human Rights Commission, looking at the commissions in other cities, learning from their mistakes. It was like, and one of the things that I found quite interesting was in the dozens of meetings that we held over the last year and a half that were open to the public, none of the concerns that I'm hearing today were ever brought up or mentioned. It was like, we had very little public comment throughout the process because people didn't come and show up and try and help craft the ordinance to address their concerns. I think that the work that we did with municipal staff and the other members of the council and task force really took into account the concerns that we did in our research. And I just think that we have a really well-written, well-crafted ordinance and would really encourage its passage. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. George Teague, followed by Kristi Hall.
My name is George Teague. My address is 12137 Green Lawn Avenue in Oklahoma City. I'm here to oppose this commission. It seems that we've had one in the past. I see no reason to resurrect it now. Others have spoken more eloquently and provided you with many more facts and figures than I, I want to take the time to do. I do want to mention, I think it would ultimately be very divisive. It can certainly be used that way. And we all know this country is divided now. We don't need further division coming down to the state of Oklahoma, or more specifically to this city. And I'm looking, as I see here, it's, there's so much that's undefined that could possibly go awry. Powers, duties, and functions of the commission are not defined. It says, "Establishing administrative complaint, investigation, and resolution process, providing for potential conciliation remedy to include possible referrals to other public bodies and officers." They're in existence. Why do we want to further encumber ourselves with another commission? I urge this council not to adopt it, and most specifically to my councilman, David Greenwell. Please vote no. Thank you.
Kristi Hall, followed by Mary Lippert.
Good morning. I'm Kristi Hall. I live at 12416 Valverde Drive. Mark is my councilman, and I ask you to vote no. I'm extremely introverted, so I'd like to yield my time to Derwin Ramani.
Well, it's not really a thing. What, whoever that is can, is certainly welcome to sign up. Is he on here? Okay. Derwin, you said?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Sorry, hold on one second, sir, because we're, we're kind of getting out of order now. I want to make sure you've signed up. Can you do me a favor? And there are these yellow, I don't have one for you, these yellow sheets, and you write your name and address, and you will absolutely get a chance to speak, but they're outside.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mary Lippert will be next, followed by Mark Wolbeer.
Good morning. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 11K, Ordinance to Establish a HRC. I'm a lifelong member of the Oklahoma City community, specifically Wards One, Two, and Seven. And my family's history as citizens goes back 100 years. We have found this a great place to raise our family, work, live, do life, and contribute to our communities. A recent experience in this chamber was on June 7th meeting, in which the council discussed the proposed budget, and multiple council members commented on data provided to them in support of the city budget, as well as constituent concerns for transparency in the process. Data and transparency were needed but lacking in developing this ordinance. Task force meetings began in 2020, were held via Zoom, in which minutes were not recorded, Zoom video was not transcribed, and neither the video or subsequent transcription were available until a citizen's request after the June 7th meeting. 20 hours of task force meeting video and transcription notes were posted the following week, 18 months after the first meeting and 10 months after the meeting in 2021, barely time to make informed public comments by the deadline. The proposed ordinance states in Number Four Declaration, "Whereas the City of Oklahoma City, there is danger to the health, morals, safety, and welfare of the city and its inhabitants and visitors from groups of people antagonistic to 11 stated identities." One word stands out to me, morals. Who can be the judge of another's morals? Each of us come to this chamber with a set of morals instilled in us by a person or institution, or in my case, a faith in the divine Creator, Jesus Christ. Morals presume a divine entity from whom we derive our virtues. Christianity, Judaism, and Islamic religions all derive from a divine power. Those who don't adhere to traditional religions or institutions have to find their moral compass and meaning in another entity or community of individuals. We've all learned from the past two years. We have an innate need to find purpose and meaning, and do that through community with others. How can a point, an appointed, thus unelected, commission member be given authority to make judgment on individual citizens' morals? Declaration Number Four also states, "There is a danger by groups of people antagonistic to citizens because of an immutable trait." Instead of focusing on something that cannot be changed by an appointed commission, the council needs to focus on real dangers to public safety currently taking place in our communities. Two recent instances at Scissor Tale Park in the last month have caused lifelong OKC citizens to determine it's no longer safe, a safe destination for a family outing or gathering.
Ma'am, we're over time. Is there a final concluding statement?
Thank you. I ask Ward One, Two, and Eight, Seven, all of the Ward members to vote no on this for those reasons. Thank you for your time.
Mark Wolbeer. Mark Wolbeer will be followed by Nadine Smith.
My name is Mark Wolbeer. I live at 8101 Northwest 129th Place here in Oklahoma City. I would like to thank you for having me today. I was born here in Oklahoma City. I have lived here off and on for 69 years. And during part of that time, I was employed by the federal government for working in the legal division of the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. I came to learn in that experience that when governmental agencies propose to create sub-governmental organizations, frequently you have two types. You have an organization that is created, that will create problems, or you have an organization that is created to solve problems. In my experience, more often than not, government creates the organization that will create problems. And I'm afraid this is what we have before us today. Oklahoma City does not need resources allocated to a program that is redundant, duplicative. We already have Title VII in the federal government, Title 25 in the state government. This is a divisive, and in my view, insulting concept that Oklahoma City needs this in the first place. And I will urge everybody, all of the council members, to please do not support the creation of this commission. It is detrimental to the long-term benefit of Oklahoma City taxpayers and the city at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadine Smith, followed by Mark Hader.
Good morning. My name is Nadine Smith, and I'm in Ward Two. Mr. Cooper is my councilman. And I'd just like to say that America was founded on Christian values. And I'd like to say that the comment that he made about his reason that some people tried to use their Christianity as a, as a guise of hatred for gay people, Christians love. I, I know, I have a young man, well, he's not a young man, he's not anymore. Anyway, his name is Dinah McCorklin. He's a pastor. He was raped by his uncle and his nephew, and he turned gay from that. But he had gotten delivered from being gay, going to church. He is now a pastor in New York, and he is no longer gay. So I do know that God can deliver you from that. So, but what we're here for is to stop the need for a Human Rights Commission. We don't need that because the truth, based on what he said in his article, I don't feel like it's fair to base it on your opinion about what Christianity is. And so I'd just like to say that I want to appeal to everyone that's here today, all of you that are sitting on this council, please vote no for the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. Mark Hader, followed by Joy Howell.
Hello, guys. Mark Hader, I live at 11937 North Mustang Road, Surrey Hills. I, as a county commissioner, operate in a similar role that you guys do, and I appreciate your service. You know, I grew up as a preacher's kid, and our, our family kind of adopted my, my dad's calling. And we have always been about serving others, loving others. I love everybody here. I love everybody all across the globe. And even the denomination Crossing Community Church in American Christian University, of which we were a part, has always had a message for its entire existence, for probably 125 to 50 years, of love and unity. So I just want you to know that's my heart with which I speak to you. I, too, am one that is, would encourage you to vote no. I actually was thinking, as I sat here, all the places I've lived in Oklahoma City, 10th and Council, 122nd and MacArthur, Surrey Hills with, you know, out there, Oklahoma City Community College area, 104th and Western. So if that's your ward, like here, I would say anybody that represents those, we, my wife and I, Denise Crosswhite, Hader, representative for the state, we have knocked on doors for many quality people of great integrity and conviction to try and help have people that lead with integrity all across the state and this nation, and especially this community. And everywhere I've lived, in Oklahoma City, the same, the people I've, I've lived with share the convictions that I do as well. We are opposed to growing government, as you just said, how many boards and commissions, state level, city level, whatever. Every time we create a new bureaucratic entity, whatever it does, tends to take away a little bit of someone's freedom. And this concerns me that we might have actually a, a commission that would be kind of a thought police. And I'm not dreaming, that technical, and I don't even want to bring up words that be, to be salacious, but you know, we have such a, a crisis and motivation of folks for a woke agenda. You know, my wife and I are blessed to be able to travel a lot. And so we went to Transylvania a couple of years ago, right before COVID hit, and we had a young girl from Romania as our travel guide. And I always ask people when they travel, what, what does people in your part of the world think about America? Positive, negative? She said, generally positively. And she said, you know, I learned English off watching TV shows like Andy Griffith, and I love your country. And she said, you know, we, we see the American dream that you have, and we want that. And I thought, how ironic that someone that has lived in a country behind the Iron Curtain, where they did not have freedoms, and they had people that were criticized and, and had probably commissions and things like this that maybe went around and
30 seconds, please.
decided who, who might get to be free or not. I just see this as an extra layer bureaucracy, bureaucracy is not necessary. Like you said, we've had this before. It's gone away. I would encourage all the folks, and I know at least four of you personally pretty well, I would just ask you to vote no. We don't need to grow government. Thank you.
Joy Howell. Joy Howell, followed by Lynn Redinger.
Good afternoon. My name is Joy Howell. I'm at 10804 Quell Run Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'd like to start off by saying that I'm a wife, mother, daughter, sister, and I wear many hats. One of them is I'm chairman of Precinct 578, so I represent a large scope of people. And Todd, you are my councilman, and I appreciate you very much, and I appreciate you listening to us. I'd also like to thank Max Wolfley, who you heard from earlier, because he is our House Representative, and he represents a lot of people. We might have our senator here today, but she's out of town. So what I'm saying is, please look at the scope of people that you were elected to represent. You're not representing Mayor Holt or anyone on this council. You're representing us, and we appreciate you very much. So thank you for considering everything. In consideration of that, I believe that this is government overreach at its finest. We want you for streets, the simple things, streets, protection, police, fire, that's what we want you for. And there's plenty of relief for civil rights violations that are already intact, and they are adequate. And which, by the way, it was mentioned earlier that when this was looked at, it was a little bit ludicrous. So it was proposed by someone within the council, what can we do to get you to vote for this? Well, how about taking the teeth out of it? So if you take the teeth out of it, and it's no longer, there's no longer an enforcement arm, then what is the use of having something that there's no enforcement arm over other than to hound people? We don't want this. Okay? So please, every one of you, vote no. We have a remedy for it, and respect that. It is a duplicate effort. It is divisive. It is a waste of time. Focus on finding solutions for real problems that exist.
30 seconds, please.
I show it at 2:30, that I've been going for 2:30. So, okay. I show it at 2:30, that I've been going for 2:30. So, okay. So I believe, if you believe in the American way, that is limited government, and this is cumbersome, overreach, unnecessary, let's simplify things and focus on protection of our citizens and taking care of our real needs, as Carol Hefner, Max Wolfley, Robert Hefner, those that spoke so eloquently of what we need you for. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Redinger, followed by Michael Washington.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Redinger. I live at 151912 Teasdale Road, Edmond, Oklahoma. Actually, it's in Oklahoma City, even though it's got an Edmond address. I'm in Ward Seven. I'm a simple guy. I don't believe in redundancies. Subsequently, I'm not going to repeat all the things that have already been said. And it's for that reason, I don't think we should have another agency that's covered by everybody else, by the state and the federal government. Why have something that's being done by someone else? Understand, there's been allocated $2 million for this purpose. Is that physically responsible, to spend $2 million on a redundant committee? Seriously, is that physically responsible? I say it's physically irresponsible to spend that kind of money on redundancy. Therefore, I ask that you reject this. Vote no on this proposal, as it makes no sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Washington. Mr. Washington will be followed by Philip Noakes.
Well, now, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. I want y'all to listen carefully while I say your lines out there. Now then, let us quickly visit the very purpose of this Human Rights Commission, the mission statement. According to it, its purpose is to work towards removing friction that I seem to be a part of this morning, to eliminate discrimination, which I seem to be being visited upon this morning, and promoting unity, which I find some people are not willing to accept this morning. Now then, and understanding among citizens of Oklahoma by conducting investigations, conciliations, settlements, and educational training. But oh, no, with all the hoopla that I've heard today from those anti-human right commission observers, I'm not satisfied. I love the status quo. I love the way that blacks can be gunned down by my officers. Watch it now, because one of us is going to keep it real up here. Now then, are you racist? I can't say that because I don't know you. However, some can misplace that and actually believe you are with your addage and compliments. Now then, why do I want to give you blacks a hand up when I can keep you second-class citizens? Why do I want to give you a hand up when I can discriminate and not give you a job when I don't want to now? Why do I want to give you a hand up when I can still kill you down because of color of your skin now? Like this no-good fraternal order of police and their backing that's going on with these officers in this Oklahoma City Police Department. Now then, why do I want to do that when I can choose to continue to deny you economic success, social success, political success? Because nobody has a right to investigate me. I am the guy that I'm running this here today. Now then. Let me say my conclusion before that 30 seconds hit me. I'm very much aware of it. Now watch this one. I can laugh, I can joke, I can have fun, but today my sincerity overwhelms my playfulness.
30 seconds.
There it goes, that 30. I knew it was coming. But let me say, in closing, within the timeframe, oh, no, I don't want to give you a Human Rights Commission, because I would not be able to go in and snatch your black kids from your house no more. Watch it, Michael. I would not be able to discriminate you in education no more. That's right. I would not be able to discriminate you in my judicial processes anymore. So no, sir, don't pass a Self-Rights Commission, excuse me, a Human Rights Commission. That's not my conclusion, but I'm saying, do pass it, because it's for all good, for the sake of humanity. It may be that I may have to save one of my these times. At least I did come back. Thank y'all so much. Well, now, give me my round of applause, everyone.
Philip Noakes, followed by Reed Downey.
Good morning. My name is Philip Noakes. I live at 17116 Hollyburn Circle. I'm in Ward Eight. I'm a retired family practice physician. I practice here in Oklahoma City in various clinics. In fact, I've worked at the clinic just across the street here for the Oklahoma City employees. I've had graduate courses and undergraduate courses in human physiology, in genetics, in human anatomy. I delivered babies until the insurance got so bad that I couldn't do it anymore in a small town. I used to practice in Chandler, Oklahoma. But you know, when a baby was delivered, I always knew what sex it was. There was no question. If they had a penis and a set of testicles, they were a boy. If they had labia and an introitus, they were a girl. There was no question about it. Now, when they grow up, they may develop questions about it. And what this commission is for is to push an agenda that makes me accept what I see as a physician is not correct. It tells me I've got to call him/her and her-him, and if I don't, then I'm in trouble. The commission comes to me, then there's somebody investigating me. So divisive. Now, do I have anything against homosexual individuals? No, I love them. Jesus Christ tells me to love them. I may not like their lifestyle. They don't like my lifestyle. That's fine. But we don't need a commission to tell me I have to like their lifestyle, or they have to like my lifestyle. And it's been eloquently put together. This is redundancy. $2 million could help, say, with your clinic over here that takes care of the city employees. $2 million could help with the travesty that we have in child abuse. $2 million could help recruit more police, could better our streets. And I just encourage you, anywhere that this commission is put into a city, anywhere it's done, it causes divisiveness amongst the people to the point of almost rioting. And I can tell you from my heart, please, please, don't do this. Don't do this to Oklahoma City.
30 seconds, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reed Downey, followed by Alan Loeffler.
My name is Reed Downey. I'm a longtime resident of Oklahoma City, and I have a very vivid memory of the oil boom and the oil bust. That 11-year period from the closing of Penn Square Bank to the voting of MAPS in 1993. Absolutely unique, what happened in Oklahoma City. We resurrected ourselves. During that period, our young people were leaving in droves. The attitude was, the last person out, turn out the lights. But thanks to Mayor Norick, we developed MAPS. And now we've resurrected this city. We do not need to be divided as a people. It worked because we were united. The city council, the business community, and the people were all on the same page. We wanted to improve our city, and we did. We're now unique in the nation in what's happened here. This ordinance is a divisive ordinance. It's a divider. And we do not need to be divided as a people. We need to be united for the benefit of all people.
Thank you. Alan Loeffler, followed by Lorette Kuehl.
Alan Loeffler, 113 Northeast 3rd Street. I'm in Ward Seven, Nikki's Ward. Human rights has a wonderful sound to it. Who could oppose it? Human rights council sounds great. Definition of human rights is a sensitive point, though. Religious freedom and religious rights are bedrock in this country. Many people came to this country, obviously, because of religious persecution and finding rights here. But when I, some people's definition of human rights conflict with others, there's a problem. And example that I've mentioned last month was the baker in Denver a few years ago who did not want to make a wedding cake for a homosexual ceremony. He was attacked by some human rights advocates. He was threatened, harassed, even received death threats. The baker's case went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court, and he won 7 to 2. So religious freedom was preserved. I've studied the Oklahoma State statutes, human and civil rights. I don't think anyone here would oppose those statutes. They are clearly defined. And we also have a state attorney general that's already been mentioned, clearly defined method for complaints for human right violations. They're open for business. Anybody can file. I was wondering about other cities, what their human rights councils did, so I Googled them. I would encourage you to do the same. As I looked and drilled down into the activities and agendas of these councils, they were quite different than the Oklahoma State statutes outlined with many controversies. If in Oklahoma City, human rights council follows some of these other cities, I would oppose that. I see the proposed Oklahoma City Human Rights Council as potential divisive. You've heard that word many times. I agree with that. Initiative for our community, I strongly recommend the council members vote against this particular proposal.
Lorette Kuehl. Lorette Kuehl. Okay. Oh, sorry. Lorette?
Lorette.
Okay, great. And that'll be followed by Marguerite Capon.
My name's Lorette Kuehl. I live at 4341 Northwest 20th Street. I don't have anything prepared, but I saw what was going on yesterday, and I wanted to come and see what was going on. I tried to get up to speed a little bit last night by looking at your website, and I read Ms. Nikki Nice's biography and her bio. I was so impressed with her. I was just amazed. And I just, I can't imagine why it would be so necessary to control people's thinking about other people. I mean, I'm 70, almost 76 years old. I've been married to a Latino for 30, what, two years? I have grandchildren that are part-black. I'm sorry, I see no need to enforce people, I try to tweak people's thinking. I can't control my husband's thinking or his actions, or my children. I try to keep my children from eating sugar, but they don't listen to me. Why would you want to control my thinking and my actions? I've been alive for a long time, and I see no need. I just think you'd need a lot more, a bigger pay grade, because if you're going to try to control the thoughts and the actions and the emotions of other people, I don't see how you can do that. It's going to be impossible. I can't control anyone. I can barely control myself. I'm mystified at why we need this, and who's going to pay for it, and how much are you going to pay these people to control other people? I'm just mystified. I had to come and see for myself why. I would like an explanation of why we need this. I can't figure it out, because as long as I've been alive, I have, I think black women are beautiful. I'm sorry, we do not need people telling other people what to think. We need love and care and being kind of one another. Excuse me? I hope you're going to pay these people a lot of money, because pulling the strings of other people's thinking is going to be really difficult.
30 seconds, please.
Marguerite Capon. Marguerite Capon will be followed by Dorita Brown.
Good morning. I'm a nervous speaker, so I do have a prepared statement. My address is 12917 Cloverleaf Lane in Oklahoma City. I'm from Ward Five, David Greenwell's district. My statement regarding the proposed Human Rights Commission, I'm asking the council to vote no on the commission. Oklahomans are already protected by the discrimination, by discriminations by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. The Human Rights Commission has been done in the past, hearing only five cases a year. I believe this would be a waste of the city's time, a waste in the use of the employees and taxpayer money. I noticed a common theme among the task force members. They were employees of the state universities, activists, progressives, and Marxists. They promote wokeness in the name of racism and equality, while they achieve the exact opposite. They do not reflect the values or morals of Oklahomans. We do not want to promote anything that would create an atmosphere of division and hate. Section 3 of the draft states an emergency, it being immediately necessary for the preservation of peace, health, safety, and public good of Oklahoma City and the inhabitants thereof. An emergency is hereby declared to exist. We're blessed to live in a state where we have the rule of law, and it prevails. Its citizens are protected by those laws with recourse if necessary. Oklahomans have a reputation of coming together during disasters and hard times. Economic status and race are not an issue. Let's preserve and celebrate that reputation. Thank you.
Dorita Brown. Dorita Brown will be followed by Frances Hobbs.
Good morning, everyone. I did prepare, but I unfortunately left my curb-street paper, curbside-street paper at home. So this is what I wanted to reference this morning. I am a regular, well, I regularly read it, buy it off the street. And one of the issues had Mayor Holt's campaign ad on the back of it, and it made me realize that he, probably it helped curbside, and it showed me that Mayor Holt really has a tendency to care for the fringe and the weak and the poor and the homeless. So in reading the curbside, I came across the article about how much starvation we have here in Oklahoma. And unfortunately, I don't have the statistics in my memory, but except one, and one in five children are starving in this city. And we have organizations that can help them, as well as the other fringe groups. So I, just in common sense, I'm just thinking that with food shortages being predicted, and with gasoline as high as it is, and with more crime rate up, and people having such a hard time, that I would love to see, I would hope to see, our city's budget include help for organizations that are already helping, or developing programs and suggestions and means to inform our people to plant a garden victory, or a victory garden, or to have a chicken in the backyard, or some eggs, or whatever they can afford there. So I'm not against the Human Rights Commission totally, only at this time. This is, our condition here in our country and state is going to become worse. And I think that instead of helping a fringe group right now, we need to help the total population. think that instead of helping a fringe group right now, we need to help the total population. And another thing I've noticed about agencies that sort of adhere to helping those who are discriminated, is that they also become a discriminator. So I wouldn't want to see our city take that kind of position.
30 seconds, please.
With people who are wrongfully discriminated against. Thank you, and I do hope you vote no. And my Ward 6, Joe Beth Harmon. Hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances Hobbs. Frances Hobbs will be followed by Rick Horner.
Good morning. My name is Frances Hobbes, and even though I do reside at 617 Fox Hill Drive in Edmond, I can personally take you to every single Brahms in all of Oklahoma City, so been helping the tax base. My wife and I, we moved here from the Left Coast, from California, the once golden state some 15 years ago, where I say we escaped, and had the blessing of arriving and landing in Oklahoma City to serve for 14 and a half years in Capitol Hill on the South Side, in a inner-city urban ministry there. And so we had been bragging to our family back in the East Coast, "You all need to just leave a sinking ship behind and come to OKC," that there's vision here, we belong to the land, the land we belong to really is grand, and there's a unity, a civic mindedness that's very unique and special, far unlike what we found in California, where everything was so splintered and divided. So when I first heard about human rights, I thought, "Well, that's great. We can all use human rights." We've been hearing about human rights ever since the days of President Jimmy Carter, right? Having places like in Zimbabwe and Paraguay, countries escaping colonial oppression, that definitely human rights is something all of us can get behind and support. But then I learned, "No, silly, they're talking about human rights in Oklahoma City." And I thought to myself, "Well, that's kind of strange," because back in, I thought to myself, you know, in like the 1960s, when in the South following the 1965 Voting Rights Act or the Civil Rights Act, that there was a need, there was a need for extra attention and oversight and enforcement in those situations in a Mississippi Burning kind of context of de facto and de jure oppression and discrimination. And so maybe it's just me. Maybe someone can correct me, but I haven't, I'm not hearing about systematic structural oppression going on in Oklahoma City against minorities or vulnerable communities. Can somebody point me to the outcry of violence, injustice, oppression, the sensational headlines that are happening today? I just don't hear that. Is this the reason that Oklahoma City Council would establish our own Human Rights Commission? Do you see yourself living in a city filled with bigotry and systematic marginalization today? So I have been very encouraged and edified to hear the Embark presentation, the Palomar presentation, and the East Point presentation. I see that there is a very positive and constructive spirit from, as Reed Downey pointed out, since the days of Mayor Norick, that you guys are on a roll.
30 seconds, please.
And so I urge you to not mess that positive and constructive trend up. And so it would come as a surprise for me and many others to learn that Oklahoma City, that you all are running, rolling around in so much surplus revenue that you're just itching, you're looking for a way to spend it. So as I was approaching the Oklahoma City building from the east, the inscription atop this building summed it all up for me, "Dedicated to the people of OKC and to the perpetuation of good government." And with that view in mind, that inscription on this building, please vote no.
Rick Horner. Rick Horner will be followed by Denise Hare.
Yes, hi. My name's Rick Horner. I have a property at 13201 Southeast 44th Street. My representative is Todd Stone, Ward 4. I'd just like to say right off the bat, I hope you vote against this. I was here last time to speak about it and didn't get the opportunity to. I don't understand why. I filled out the form. Todd and several of you, I called, never got a call back. Very disappointing. I won't go into a lot of detail, because what was said already by Mr. and Ms. Hefner and several others have been what I would basically repeat. But I will say a few things. It's a government overreach. We have too much in our lives today. There needs to be more proper forms of government, not improper forms of government, and this is an example of that, and a waste of money, and I can't imagine how much it's going to cost in the long run. I could go into a lot of detail about this too, but I want you to know I'm a very active political activist-type guy. I've knocked doors for people. Todd, I helped you get in there. Very disappointed in this being even come up. And prior to you, I guarantee you, you could ask city council that sit on this horseshoe that they wouldn't have won without my help. I can give you lots of examples of people that I've helped, that not everybody I've helped's won. I knocked doors for Frank Urbanic. Every precinct I knocked was red, won. Every precinct I knocked. Several votes, I'll put it that way. And I'll knock next time for somebody. I could go into detail about that, but I just want you to know that I'm not somebody that just sits at home and does nothing. But I'm very disappointed in this even being come up, and want you to know that I want you to vote against it. And that's all I'll say for now.
Denise Hare. Denise Hare will be followed by Tana Singer.
My name is Denise Hare, and I am in Mr. Johnsonfer's Ward. And in my opinion, the city of Oklahoma City does not need a city Human Rights Commission. Those issues are better addressed at the statewide level, and they are already state laws. Statewide officials, city ordinance, city officials who address those issues, including the Oklahoma Attorney General's Office and the Municipal Counselor's Office. There is no special issue here in Oklahoma City that specifically needs addressing with a new commission. The city ordinance, Chapter 25, already provide for various anti-discrimination provisions and anti-intimidation provisions, as do state laws. While human rights is an important issue, we do not need a separate city-level commission for each important issue. In my opinion, the city council is elected by citizens to address local, everyday issues. I respectfully ask that the city council stick to the core functions and do not take on rules that distract from its core functions. In my opinion, those are: provide police and safety for Oklahoma City citizens, fix city infrastructure and roads, potholes, garbage collection, provide and support public transportation, provide reasonable zoning regulations, encourage economic development in the city, maintain city parks, and address local emergencies such as ice storms and tornadoes. To the extent there are issues with discrimination or intimidation in this city, we already have Chapter 25 of the municipal ordinances to address them. I don't consider a commission as the best way to address them, and I don't consider this a big enough issue in Oklahoma City to justify a new commission. I request that you vote no on forming a new commission. Thank you.
Tana Singer. Followed by Janice Nuttall. Tana Singer first.
Hi, my name is Tana Singer, and I'm a member of Ward 8. I've spoken to many people since the last time I spoke at this meeting. Mark was nice enough to provide these stats about our city. He said that we're the sixth fastest-growing city. 85% of the people here think it's a great place to live. 82% think it's a great place to work, and 76% think it's a great place to raise a family, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. I was born and raised here. My dad had a small drafting business on 5th and Hudson. We only had one car, so we'd drive back and forth to pick him up every night. Our downtown was a ghost town. There were businesses, but there would never be any reason to come back downtown after you left for the evening. And so look at our city today. Per Mayor Holt's State of the City address, he took the opportunity to brag on all these things. Scissor Tail Park, the New Omni Hotel, restaurants, our first American museum, the Women's College World Series. He said we have a booming economy, we have a low tax burden, and we have lowering crime rates, and the list went on and on. The people of this city have graciously worked and funded many of these projects. So it is very confusing that at the same time they want us to believe our city is so full of strife that we need another layer of government to police and patrol our citizens. I grew up in public schools here. I made friends with different races and many people of different socioeconomic backgrounds. I had an incredible high school experience at John Marshall High School, and we've spent the last two years planning our reunion this weekend. So I've looked in awe at all my classmates and all of our differences. And I noticed that we all have the tools to be successful, in part because we had supportive families, we had a good education, and most importantly, we all have the ability to maturely navigate the world and be critical thinkers. Government thinks we need layers and layers of councils and commissions, as seen on your council website and all the meetings on your calendars. This includes the new diversity hire whose position is to make OKC the most inclusive employer. So why do we need this commission if the future of the city is so bright? The mayor and the council are now asking us to agree for further funding to keep the thunder in town by building a new arena for the team.
30 seconds, please.
You are trusting we have professionals and businesses in place to support your endeavors, but you also want us to fund all these layers of bureaucracy and believe our city is ripe with human rights issues. It's just hard to argue both sides of this. Our city does not need this commission, and I urge all of you to vote against it.
Janice Nuttall. Janice Nuttall will be followed by Suzanne Reynolds.
Hello. My name's Janice Nuttall. I live at 4806 North Council Road, and I'd like to defer my time to Suzanne Reynolds.
She's next. So that's not really a thing, deferring your time, but she's next. It works out. Suzanne Reynolds will be followed by David Burschek.
So do I get double time, or do I?
You do not. You get three.
I cry. My name is Suzanne Reynolds, and I live at 1504 Glenwood Avenue. I grew up in Ward 8 and do business in Ward 8. I am first-generation-born American. My parents, my extended family, came here legally and became naturalized citizens, not because they saw barriers or issues or problems with human rights, but because they saw opportunities. So I'm very fortunate to have been born in this country, and I appreciate my citizenship. I appreciate it even more because I have lived under an oppressive regime abroad for eight years of my childhood. I know exactly what it feels like to have my individual rights stripped. My only value and worth is only dependent on my intersectional affinity groups. So with that, addressing the Human Rights Commission here, we are all for human rights and treating everyone with dignity. Human rights councils that have formed across the country appropriate the positive connotations of human rights to push policies that are harmful to the citizens of that city. They cloak a progressive agenda with the morality of humanism and trick a city's citizens into embracing extreme policies that are based on cultural determinism, otherwise called critical race theory, queer theory, et cetera. More importantly, they do not work and are harmful, as you've heard others already give testimony. They should not be adopted here. It distracts the city, its citizens, and leadership from the important task of maintaining services that lead to improved quality of life and economic growth. Cities like Chicago, Seattle, and Minneapolis, to mention a few, have proposed the following policies with detrimental and terrible results in their cities. Policies like number one, defund the police for racial justice. Number two, reform the criminal justice system for racial justice. Human Rights Council's recommendations for the homeless have also been a failure. They have proposed new laws around forceful displacement that let the unhoused sleep in a public space. They advocate for homeless people to be designated as a protected class, leading to special protections under the law. In the name of human rights, they leave drug addicts and the mentally ill to fend for themselves. It allows them to occupy almost any public space. Scissor Tail Park will become a place that is not safe for children and families, as the mentally ill and drug addicts call it home. These policies will drive people and money away from Oklahoma City and stifle our growth. In addition, they advocate for critical gender and queer theory that declares belief in objective reality racist and transphobic. They promote the idea that words have no meaning and are only expressions of power. It muddles our ability to communicate with each other and even think clearly. It will prevent redevelopment of downtowns, economic development. The city council can decide this without extreme policies that the Human Rights Council will promote. In conclusion, human rights councils have been political tools to promote policies that have failed in every city they've been tried. Almost all cities that have adopted them have declining population growth and economic development. Oklahoma City, as Tana just said, is the sixth fastest-growing city in America. Downtown is undergoing a wonderful transformation. Many of the leaders in the progressive cities I've talked about...
We're over time. Are you getting close to a?
Yes.
To a conclusion?
Yes. Have been held accountable for these failed policies through recall in the election box. It will happen quickly here. Please do not do this. I'm asking you, Ward 8, Mark Stone cipher, please vote no, and each of you, please consider what you are voting on and vote against this very illiberal proposal. Thank you.
David Burschek will be followed by Terrell McBride.
David Burschek, I live in Ward 2, and I want to address the members of the council representing a friend that was unable to attend today, and wanted to voice his strong opposition to this proposed commission, Human Rights Commission. The greatness of the United States and its constitutional system of government is enshrined in the phrase "equal justice for all." For too long in American history, the basic constitutional protection was denied to too many Americans based solely on their racial and ethnic heritage. The enduring brilliance of the American experiment is the self-correcting nature of our system, and 50 years since the height of the Civil Rights Movement has seen extraordinary positive change in our country. The basic protections of our Constitution and our federal and state laws now apply equally to Americans regardless of color. African-American has served as President of the United States, and men and women of Hispanic, Asian, and many racial heritages have reached the highest rungs of American government. Our national creed that all men are created equal, endowed by their Creator with inalienable rights, has become the law of the land through positive political and social change that remove discrimination from our laws and open opportunity for millions of Americans. And yet, some Americans seem determined to reverse the positive change that our country has seen since the days of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The dream of Dr. King, that Americans should be judged by the content of their character and not the color of their skin, seems to have become an increasingly distant memory for many of our progressive neighbors. Unfortunately, the proposed Human Rights Commission not only fails to advance the fairness and further Dr. King's dream, it dramatically sets back the fight for racial equality and justice in our state. By creating a body outside of the traditional legal structure that applies to all Americans regardless of race and establishing exclusionary institution for the purpose of furthering racial grievance, the commission, I believe, will serve as a dangerous example of separate and unequal justice. At a time of racial and political division, the council should be devoting its energy to bringing together Oklahoma City residents with a common vision for the future.
30 seconds, please.
Instead, this ordinance seeks to divide residents by background where none need to exist and create a structure that is completely unnecessary to solve a problem that proponents seem to have provided little documentation. What does dividing Oklahoma's by background accomplish in the quest for unity and healing and justice? The proponents of this ordinance have failed to demonstrate a need for this measure. They have failed to speak to most Americans with the requirements. How does this ordinance advance our unity? I have seen the opposite. In a city, county, and state where such strides have been made to unite rather than divide over the past 50 years, I'm concerned that this ordinance would reverse this progress. I strongly urge the council to reject this. Thank you for your time.
Terrell McBride. Terrell McBride will be followed by Derwin Romani.
Good morning. I'm Terrell McBride, and I pastor First AM I'm Terrell McBride, and I pastor First AM Church here, fame OKC. I recently moved here from Philadelphia. I'm also the son of, a proud son of, lesbian parents. I'm a person who is in the belief of love and justice for all people. I've been hearing the argument against this commission. I kept hearing the word "division" and divisiveness, but what I hear in this commission is not something that divides us but unites us. It brings voices of the least of these to the forefront and allows us to be willing to give equal justice to all people. And so I feel that persons who are speaking about the Jesus and God and all this stuff, I feel like this is more in line with what Jesus would want. In fact, he said, "As we done to the least of these, so have we done to him." And so we have opportunity here, as a city, to do for the least of these, to make sure that voices that are not normally heard are amplified and in this city shown that our values and are concerned for them. And so I will push for you to vote yes for this commission, and I will move that this city will continue to be a beacon of light and hope for those who voices have not been heard, and you will provide an opportunity for that voices to be heard. Thank you so much for doing so.
Thank you. Derwin Romany will be followed by Annette Marsh.
It's a pleasure to be before you. My name is Derwin A. Sixtis-Romany. I'm from Ward Seven. Happy birthday, Nikki Nice, my sister. I have a different concern and a different avenue to look at this proposal before our city. I have concerns. I'm neither for nor against, but I have concerns. And my concerns fall from an area that wasn't discussed here at all. My concerns is for African-American men, African-American men that are heterosexual, African-American men. I've heard far too long and through real surveys and through real research, the lie. So I'm here to address the lie, the criminal lie I want to address. My concerns is with people of faith and people of non-faith that say that they behoove me to constantly move forward programs that exclude black men. So I heard some numbers thrown out. Now, I didn't, I just came down here on the fly, but I'm going to address some issues. I heard that it was going to be $2 million, correct? $2 million will be spent? So that was a false analogy.
That's false.
So what I would like to say, as a gentleman such as myself, I'm a peer recovery support specialist, I'm a life coach, I've been in the trenches almost daily out there with gang members, I don't get a penny for it. And I'm saying here on this record today that I'm in the trenches every day out there with gang members, working with them. I have an impeccable, impeccable track record of working with young and African-American black men. That work, that record is scorned, scorned by some of the Marxists. They despise me. But when they had a shooting on 36th the other day, about two weeks ago, the condescending charlatan preachers and fake bourgeoisie activists, they called Derwin Romany. Derwin Romany, can you come talk to the gang members? Can you hold a summit, Derwin Romany, to talk to the gang members? Black men constantly get left out of these conversations. When the money is divvied, I heard the ladies speak while they're going, I was the only one clapped. The reason I clap for you, woman, because too much in American history-
Thirty seconds, please.
-when we roll out something, we always say, "Oh, this is going to be good and this is going to be for everybody." But consistently, and I'm not talking about the far-right-wing racists on the far right, I'm talking about the white supremacy liberals that constantly leave black masculine men out of the equation of anything they roll out. It was just, two weeks ago, I went down accidentally with nobody in the room but me and Mr. Pettis at North Care, are rolling out something for the homeless. Nothing for the East Side. There's no shelters for the East Side. There's nothing in these equations that you keep rolling out these committees after committees and you say you have something for the black man. Every one of the movements is hijacked. If Dr. Martin Luther King was here right to this day, he was a notorious womanizer. He'd have been counsel, we would have never heard that speech. If Malcolm X was here right to this day, you would have hated on Malcolm X because you would have said, "He's anti-Semitic."
We're over time.
"He's anti-man. He's anti-gay." Thank you for allowing me this moment.
Thank you. Annette Marsh, followed by Jacob Webb. Annette Marsh will be followed by Jacob Webb.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming to my book club originally. I am a teacher, retired. I was teaching probably before any of you were a gleam in your mom and dad's eye. But I came today because I have enjoyed the conveniences of everything we voted on in Oklahoma City. I just took my children to a tennis lesson at the park at 38th and Portland. Took me a while to get there, but I also went to Scissor Tail Park on the Fourth of July and enjoyed that beautiful Fourth of July display. Now, I think that you all are probably taking a test today. Are you going to vote for or are you going to vote against this measure? What is already in place? I love the gentleman that just spoke now. He spoke very well, and Suzanne, and the lady before her, so I don't have to go over those points again. So the idea comes down to this. Are you going to vote yes or no today? That's your test. And as your teacher, I want you to think about everybody that's talked today, especially this last gentleman, because he spoke the best, one of all. So now you know how to answer your test question. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Be followed by Hannah Royce.
How's everyone? Doing good? I've been seeing what's happening to the nation that I was growing up to admire. It's being cataclysmic, destructive, what's been happening to our nation for the past six, seven years, eight years, maybe longer than that. All I want for everybody is to be happy, which we all want that, right? And that's why we come up with these bills and we hope that make them happy, but when you throw money at a problem, it's not going to make it better. You know what makes it better? On top of that, we don't know where all the money really goes. These programs, you know, we don't know where they go. I would like receipts on the websites to see where it goes. We're getting very close to becoming Venezuela. Every right that we have has been stripped away a little bit, more and more, by Washington, but not only by Washington, but by some people here in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma itself. Now, having said, I do respect each and every one of you because you're elected official, but I will disagree with you on a lot of things. But that doesn't mean that I hold a lot of animosity towards you. We're all Americans, despite what color we are, despite what sex we are. And another thing is that Christians have compromised a lot of their beliefs and faiths so people feel welcomed. If you read the Bible through and through, everything that's going on right now, the Bible's against. The immorality, and it says, and it is against homosexuality. But that does not mean that I, as a Christian, hate anyone who is homosexual or trans. But I am worried about children being around all this stuff. They shouldn't know this stuff when they're young.
Thirty seconds, please.
So I just, I just want you all to realize what's really going on. I hope you do, and I hope that you're not going to take part in this. Taking, you know, just stripping away every day, every single day, you come up with these little decisions, these little, these little plans that can end up taking what we, our rights are left, take them away. I know you feel like you're adding rights, but you're really taking rights away. So this, this board is just like, is, you know, you wrong-speak, wrong-think. The First Amendment is protected.
We're over time, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Hannah Royce. Hannah Royce will be followed by Reverend Cherie Dickerson.
Good morning, and what a morning it is. My name is Hannah Royce, and I am a resident of Ward Two. I am a queer, white woman who grew up in Wilberton, Oklahoma. And I grew up with a lot of voices around me similar to what we've heard today. And as someone who had to come out to my grandparents and do the work that my grandparents didn't unravel, I think is the exact reason we need a Human Rights Task Force and Commission to readily be available to those who have been historically left out of these conversations. I believe it was mentioned by a commenter earlier, which I didn't even plan to be here today, I was sitting at my desk fuming. I believe they said, "Only countries with a history of colonial oppression needs these kinds of commissions." Well, welcome to Oklahoma, where we were founded by colonial settlers and took the land that did not belong to us 100 years ago. So if you are a proud Oklahoman who has family that's been here for 100 years, guess what? They stole the land, the land that we sit on and operate government and want limited government from. And, and the pieces of not having rights and your rights are being taken away, I can't help but think of what's happening with abortion in our state. And next, that could mean LGBTQ rights and the right to marry. The folks behind me, most of whom are white and Christian, want to preserve and celebrate our history. What history is that? Because you've spoken out against critical race theory, which is actually something nobody on the left claims to want, but you have made the point today as to why we need to learn our history. Because I'm not sure that most of you know our history. And to end, because it seems like none of you are aware that there are things happening in our city that are human rights violations, I will name the names of folks who have been murdered-
Thirty seconds, please.
...by our police department. Jacob Mohn Howe, Tony Lamhot Mathis, Chris Stone, Hayden Taylor, Paul Strickland, William Patrick Young, Elair Barber, Justin Anderson, Michael John, Leo Craig Jr., Brian Dyer, Quentin Broaddus, Benny Edwards, Stavion Rodriguez, Michael Dansby, Brandon Milburn, Kyle Elrod, Samuel Lanham. Thank you.
Reverend Cherie Dickerson, followed by Susie Mock.
Sorry, Reverend Cherie Dickerson, followed by Susie Mock. Good afternoon. I am Reverend T. Cherie Dickerson. I am a resident of Ward Seven. I am, I am shaken today by what I'm hearing. I wasn't planning on being here, but there's no other place where I should be with the commission of my ordination. I have listened to those that identify as Christians, that identify as those who love the Christ, who was a person who loved people, who loved humans, who was radical, who believed that humans should have rights. Why are you so upset about literally a commission of those that, when you have the audacity and the unmitigated gall to bring up some of the leaders like Dr. King, who spoke about civil rights? There's really no difference. What I've heard is people asking to literally codify discrimination and racism. I've heard words that are harmful, that breach simple human compassion, that don't edify humanity. That's what Christ was about. Do you not know Him? I sat there and I listened, and I don't think it matters how I identify, who I love, but I believe that everyone has the right to identify as they are. They have the right to love who they love. They have the right to exist without threat of harm. What many of the words that you all have said today are harmful. They are the epitome of hate, not edifying of that of the love of Christ of which you speak. We also know that there is supposed to be a delineation between church and state, and yet we are bringing it in these halls of government and using it and weaponizing Christianity. Shameful. My heart is broken.
Thirty seconds, please.
And so I am asking to the council to please consider your conscience, consider that each of your people, your constituency, are humans, and they should have representation and they should have rights. Please vote yes. Please vote yes, and instill the practices that Oklahoma is supposed to be about. Oklahoma means land of the natives. We've already spoken about what we've taken. We already know that Oklahoma was also one of the places where black people and brown people continue to suffer. It is 2022, and we are still having argument and discussion and debate around civility and human rights. My God, please allow humanity to win today. Thank you.
I'm going to read my statement because I want to go quickly, so if I speak too fast, forgive me. Sometimes when I talk directly to someone, I go on and on. My name is Susie Mock. I live in Ward Eight. Mark Stonecifer is my councilman. And I was born and raised in Southern California. So my perspective is coming from somewhere else and moving to Oklahoma. And I believe this is one of the best states in our country. I love it, and it grieves my heart that we are here today discussing this. I spoke previously, I looked and researched, and the reason this commission was shut down in 1996 is because of what we're experiencing here today. Division, strife, anger, upset, sadness. We are a Christian nation, whether you believe and ascribe to it or not. This is our founding. We can't go away from it. But in that, we are to love one another. I'm going to go back to my notes because I believe that this council is setting up a commission that has the potential for a person or a community to come against one another and judge each other by our behaviors, our words, our deeds, at the height of a time when we live in this cancel culture, is all I'm going to call it. This will only create more division and strife in our city, as exemplified today. Less understanding, compassion, and care of one another. I beg you to reconsider prayerfully what you are opening the can of worms that was shut down only as recent as 1996. I don't understand why it was shut down, but I do now. And because of that, they shut it down because of the strife that they had to sit here in front of and listen to this however many times a year. I won't even address the budget. I think we should focus on bigger problems in our city that have changed over the last several years. For starters, focusing on the homeless crisis, what was created and made worse over the last several years, giving bus fare from California cities and $50 to relocate to Oklahoma City where- Anyway, I'm from California, believe me, I have a lot of family out there. Focus on stopping the rising crime in Oklahoma City. Give more support and funding to the police and the academy. We are currently 200 officers down, is that possibly right? How can we have a safe city with these rates? Rather, we need to focus more on loving our neighbor as ourselves, not bringing complaints against one another. Work it out.
Thirty seconds, please.
Please give us a forum that we can not have to come against and pit each other against our complaints. I really wanted to end in a verse, and I will, because even if people are saying it's like using Christianity, I'm not trying to. I am wanting us to not judge each other, but love each other. So if we can ascribe to Philippians 4:8, "Finally brethren, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are noble, whatsoever things are just, whatsoever things are pure, whatsoever things are lovely, whatsoever things are good report; if there is any virtue, if there is anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things." Philippians 4:8. I ask you to prayerfully consider and vote no on a commission that will potentially only lead to more division in our fair, wonderful city. Thank you.
Joy Spicer. Okay. Joy Spicer. Will be followed by Sandino Thompson.
Hello. I want to thank you for being here and for your service and for listening to us. I am from Ward Eight. My address is 3000, oh, three, sorry, 3000 West Memorial Road, 731, I'm sorry. I'll skip that. I'm coming from the perspective of a mom, a daughter, a caretaker, and I want to highlight also today my experience in academics and as a college educator, who has studied the theories that the current concept of human rights are based on. Much of the theory comes under the umbrella of postmodernism, which holds the tenet of relativism, meaning that truth is relative and not fixed. This is where a victim mindset is perpetuated. There's always a victim to be rescued. The victim mindset has never helped anyone become successful. Why not focus on some root answers such as mental health, or on literacy so that people can vote, or, and that they're informed of what they're voting on, and that they can make good choices and that they can be successful in life? So I just, I hate to see this victim mindset that continually gets perpetuated over and over, and there's just a victim of the day, and then it'll be a different victim of the day. So, and there's a different oppressor. In fact, gay men are considered oppressors now, because they're a little higher on the scale, I guess. So it will, it, it just cycles over and over. So I encourage you to vote no. I think this brings contention, and it doesn't solve any answers, and it, you can even look ahead and see where it's happened in other cities that has had this and the problems that it's caused. You can look ahead with the social issues of the day, and you can even see the intersection with the, the sexual rights movement, and with children, and the intersection coming, and I'm sorry, it's funny. I'm sorry, it's funny. I don't think it's funny. So I thank you for your time and for listening.
Sandino Thompson, who will be followed by George Young.
Thank you. Here in a little bit different capacity than earlier this morning, but as a father, as a son, and grandson, great-grandson, great-great-grandson of the great state of Oklahoma and the city of Oklahoma City. So I wanted to speak mostly because I did, I brought my son here today to see how sort of civic government works and to kind of get the experience of what I believe is still the most representative form of government in our republic. So I'm very thankful for that. I'm very thankful for the opportunity, and I'm, again, been in Oklahoma City, our family's been in Oklahoma City since its founding, so this is what I know, it's what I'm committed to, as I spoke to earlier. I didn't realize how controversial this, this approach to reconciliation and engagement and community conversation was. That's kind of how I've always seen it. I'm familiar with the concept of civil rights. My parents attended Dungy High School, Roscoe Dungy High School, a litigator who helped to desegregate the city of Oklahoma City from its very early foundings in the African-American community's start in Deep Deuce. They were taught by Nancy Davis, who was the first Black woman to attend, the first Black woman to attend Oklahoma State University, of which I'm also a graduate as an Oklahoman, and were taught by Clara Looper. My father participated in the city-ends, and some of the earliest city-ends to speak up for the, the human rights and the civil rights of the country. I inherited a lot of that legacy, it's why I'm so committed to this city, and it's why I think about it as home. My family, like a lot of our families, came here as a place of opportunity. I think about this for Human Rights Commission as an opportunity to continue the conversations that do make Oklahoma City unique. During the civil rights struggles, during the 60s, the 70s, and the 80s, you didn't see the dogs in the street, you didn't see the fire, the fire hoses pushing women and kids out, and it was because we had dialogue in the city. Those are the stories that I inherited, the ones that I know. I did, I heard about my father and others being spat on and derided for sitting at a, at a lunch counter, but they had a dialogue and a conversation. I am not anti-police. We have good involvement. I live on, I'm a citizen of Ward Seven. I live on 42nd Street, right down the street from Spring Lake.
Thirty seconds, please.
We always try and figure out who the next captain is and how we can interact, but I've also been racially profiled. I've also experienced, be it, be it through, from the economic spaces in the community, or from the spaces of having to sort of grow up in the 80s and 90s as a minister of society, as someone who was sort of seen as other. I very much understand that we need a dialogue in the city, we need a dialogue in the community. It seems like a civil rights, sorry, a human rights commission is an opportunity for us to see that forward, so I'm supportive of it, and I actually think the discourse today really highlights the need for more conversation in the community to continue to bring us together and to continue to highlight and reinforce what makes Oklahoma City so unique and unifying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final citizen who signed up to speak, Senator George Young.
Thank you. Good morning to each and every one of you. I try to stay up and down here and stay over at 23rd and Lincoln, where I'm supposed to be to do the talking, but sometimes it is imperative that I show up, show my face and show my support. My heart is breaking right now. My heart is breaking because I am a child of history, and when I look back at history and look back at the things that have occurred in history, if we could go back to 1865, we'd have a same line of people who came up with the same line of reasoning that we have here today. We have courts that have different levels, because no one wants to take no, no one wants to be mistreated, and no one wants to be at the bottom of the heap. And so it is imperative that Oklahoma City, if we're going to continue to strive to be the city that you have described, Mayor Holden, that you are doing a good job of making all that it can be, we need this commission. We need this. We need it because, as I listen to people who live in the communities and say that everything is great and fine, I get those phone calls. I get the phone calls about people who have been mistreated and have no way, no out, no place to call, no place to turn to. I get those phone calls because people elected me to listen to them and to stand for them and to hear today the fight against something that would help give people a voice. I've been Black all my life, 68 years. You can't tell me, because you live in a neighborhood, what's good for me, because you don't encounter what I encounter. I can tell them all the time, every police officer, Craig, that, that exists. My name is George Young, and I'm the State Senator for City District 48, and I still get stopped. We need to make sure that we are listening to the voices of people who this will help. We need to make sure that we're listening to the voices of people who need help. I wouldn't be here if I thought this was something that could be passed over and passed by. This is significant in the life of this city. If we're going to continue to grow, I heard someone use some examples a few minutes ago, 85%, around 80%, yeah, that's darn right, because it's only 15, 20% African-Americans, and so most of us who are not here lean on folk like Nick and Nice to stand up and to say the things that are needful and necessary.
Thirty seconds, please.
Let me end with this. You, you heard me say earlier, I am a pastor. I still actively pastor. And let me tell you something, this breaks my heart, but you know what? It keeps me fighting. I feel like I'm back in the chamber at 23rd and Lincoln, because it's the same struggle that goes on there. Take your time and vote on this in the correct way.
All right, thank you. That concludes our citizens who signed up to speak. I, I know we may have some comments from council before a potential vote, but I know that Councilman Stonecypher has a presentation, I know that for sure, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, the one thing, and I wanted to make this point clear, I got a call from a friend, and that person said, "What do you do currently? How do you deal with this if somebody files a discrimination complaint with Oklahoma City?" And looking at it, since May the 3rd of 1972, we have had a procedure by which a complaint can be filed with the city manager. After that complaint is filed, and I want people to be clear on this, because I want them to know that their voice can be heard at City Hall. After that complaint is filed, our city manager can refer that out to state, federal, and other local organizations. And so I've asked for a presentation that explains the different options that are available to the city manager once he, at this time, receives a complaint at this city hall.
Well, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Councilman, would you like me to just proceed without the PowerPoint?
Sure, why don't you proceed, please.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Paula Kelly, with the Municipal Counselor's Office. Councilman Stonecypher requested that we prepare a PowerPoint that unfortunately you may not get the pleasure of seeing, because it stretched my abilities to make things interesting. What the request from Councilman Stonecypher was, was a, a presentation on currently available avenues to remedy discrimination and how to seek redress that are currently in effect today, and on multiple levels of jurisdiction. But what you would have seen in the first snapshot is basically just an explanation of legal preemption and the hierarchy of law in the United States. We, of course, have the U.S. Constitution, federal statutes, state statutes, and then we have municipal ordinances and other local government statutes, ordinances, and regulations. We've all heard what the law of the land is and how we have to follow that law of the land. Well, there are certain exceptions to the broad application of federal law. One of those is states' rights. And that anything that purely touches on a state's right or is delegated to the states by the U.S. Constitution, we follow state law over and above the federal law. The same thing follows down to municipal and political subdivisions of the state, that there's an exception for application of state law to municipal governments if it is a matter of purely local concern. So it just is, is applicable to the citizens of, for example, the city of Oklahoma City. When one of these legal jurisdictions occupies the field above the municipal organization, the political subdivisions, we are obligated to follow the laws and dictates of that higher There are numerous federal laws that prohibit discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodation. We've heard several of them mentioned today, the Civil Rights Act of 1871, Title II of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which is probably predominantly heard of prohibiting discrimination in employment, Age Discrimination in Employment Act, the Equal Pay Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act, Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Act of 1994, and then also the Federal Fair Housing Act, the FFHA. All of these individual laws prohibit discrimination based upon race, color, religion, national origin, in either places of public accommodation, housing, employment, and disability are covered by that. All of these laws, of course, are trumped by the United States Constitution. Oklahoma law has several laws that prohibit discrimination in employment, but they are all encapsulated in the Oklahoma Anti-Discrimination Act, which is Chapter 21 of Title 25. The OADA is the exclusive remedy for employment discrimination in the state of Oklahoma. The OADA eliminated a private cause of action based on common law for employment discrimination. But it also provides sections that prohibit discrimination in public accommodation on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, or national origin, age, and disability. Also on housing, which prohibits discrimination in relation to sale, rental, lease, or transfer on the basis of race, color, religion, gender, or national origin, age, familial status, or disability, and the access and use of housing. There is an exemption in, in Oklahoma law that was upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court for application to religious organizations, that housing is designed and operated to assist elderly persons pursuant to federal and state programs, and then also owner-occupied rental and lease units. So that is if a lease, a unit, say a room for rent, is also occupied by the owner of the property. The city of Oklahoma City currently has two sections, two ordinances, that address discrimination in public accommodation and also discrimination in housing. These are current Oklahoma City ordinances. You'll find them in Chapter 25 of Article III, Sections 2537 and 2539. Section 2537 addresses discrimination in public accommodation. It prohibits denial or refusal of any privileged facility, good merchandise commodity, or accommodation based upon a person's race, religion, color, creed, sex, ancestry, or national origin. Section 2539 addresses discrimination in housing, and that prohibits discrimination in housing in relation to the sale, rental, lease, or transfer on the basis of race, color, religion, sex... basis of race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, age, familial status, or disability for access and use. Section Twenty-Five, Thirty-nine was amended in two thousand and sixteen to include sexual orientation and gender identity, and offers broader protections than state law. The next slide that I wish you would have been able to see provides a comparison of the different jurisdictional remedies to redress discrimination. And it compares, there were several that would compare, federal, state, and then Oklahoma City municipal ordinances. In order to address allegations of discrimination in employment, we have the federal laws, the EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, has jurisdiction over the majority of those federal statutes that I listed off earlier. They are charged with the enforcement of those laws, and they can seek redress on behalf of a complainant through mediation, conciliation, or filing a lawsuit on behalf of a complainant, or issue a right-to-sue letter that informs a complainant that they now have the right to sue individually on their own behalf, and that the EEOC won't seek redress through the court system on their behalf. The state of Oklahoma has formed the Attorney General's Office of Civil Rights Enforcement. It is a state agency that receives complaints of employment discrimination that are prohibited by the OADA, the Oklahoma Anti-Discrimination Act, and federal lawsuits that are enforced by the EEOC. The Office of Civil Rights Enforcement may investigate, conciliate, mediate, or refer the complaint to the EEOC. Filing a complaint with either the Office of Civil Rights or the EEOC is a prerequisite to filing a lawsuit and filing a private cause of action. The only avenue for reinstatement to employment in an allegation of wrongful termination is to file under the OADA in Oklahoma State Courts. reinstatement of employment is not a remedy available in federal litigation. The Attorney General, the state Attorney General, may also file a petition in district court seeking redress on behalf of a complainant. The next topic is avenues to remedy discrimination in housing. Under the federal statutes, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is charged with investigating complaints of discrimination in relation to sale, rental, financing of housing, and access. An aggrieved party may file a lawsuit in federal court if not properly addressed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Under Oklahoma, the Oklahoma Attorney General's Office, Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, is again charged with investigating complaints of violations of the OADA. The OADA covers employment, housing, and public accommodations as well. Filing a complaint, again, with the Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, is a prerequisite to a private cause of action. Let's see. In Oklahoma City, complaints of discrimination may be submitted to the city manager or to the municipal counselor, as stated by Councilman Stonecypher. The city manager will refer any complaint to the municipal counselor, who then will refer such complaints to HUD, or the Attorney General's Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, or any other federal or state agency that has subject matter jurisdiction, such as the EEOC. You can see that the Oklahoma City ordinance has been in effect since nineteen seventy and was last amended in nineteen eighty. Avenues to remedy discrimination in public accommodations federally, the Civil Rights Division of the United States Department of Justice, or the United States Attorney's Office, receive and investigate allegations of discrimination in public accommodation. There's a Disability Rights Section of the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice that handles complaints of disability-based discrimination. An aggrieved party may file suit with no prerequisite required. In Oklahoma, again, the Attorney General's Office, the Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, is the agency charged with investigating these complaints because they also fall under the OADA. The Oklahoma AG may mediate, conciliate, or file for injunctive relief, for temporary restraining order to seek relief on behalf of an aggrieved party. This is a different remedy that is not available under the other statutes. Filing a complaint with the Oklahoma Civil Rights Enforcement Division is not a prerequisite to private cause of action. An individual can go straight to court. In Oklahoma City, it's the same ordinance as previously stated, that the complaints of discrimination can be submitted to the city manager's office, who will refer that complaint to the municipal counselor, who then the municipal counselor will refer those complaints to the appropriate state or federal agency. That is it. Those are all of the different avenues to seek redress for discrimination in the state of Oklahoma under federal, state, and municipal ordinances. The very last slide was a wonderful snapshot of a Google search and the links to file complaints with these different jurisdictions. I welcome any questions on my delightful presentation.
Thank you, Paula. Councilman Stonecypher?
Yeah, I think the only thing I wanted to do was I wanted to communicate through Channel Twenty that we protect people that are discriminated against. It's something we do not tolerate, and it's something we do not stand for, and that we have been doing that since nineteen seventy-three through the city manager and through Kenny's office, Kenny Jordan, our municipal counselor. And so, I wanted to get that message out, and I wanted people to understand that. But more importantly, I wanted to say to everyone that's here today, what a great day. This is a great day. The people spoke, and we listened. And I wish this happened more often. This is what makes our country, our republic, our principles of democracy so great, and so, thank you, everyone, for being here today.
I do have a question. I don't know if it would be for Paula or Craig. How many of those have been filed since that nineteen seventy? Do we have any data on how many of those complaints have been filed through the city manager's office?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, you're going to have to repeat that. Apparently, I'm having hearing issues in this chamber.
Oh, sorry. I know my neckline is a little farther from my face than usual. Do we have a number of how many of those complaints have been filed through the city manager's office since that nineteen seventy date?
Well, as I was preparing this presentation and looking at the ordinance and doing some research, I was unable to come across any records of any complaints received and referred by our office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm also not aware of any.
Thank you.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yeah, just a side note, because I know you and Kenny, your whole group do an excellent job in terms of research, but there is an area that should be added, and that's from the banking or lending, the Fair Lending Act and other requirements put forth by the various bank regulators also are very firm in their anti-discrimination stance, and severe penalties involved with any institution that may violate those. You could take it into the healthcare industry, too. About ten years ago, Congress began requiring not-for-profit health institutions, mainly hospitals, to reach out, and not only can they not discriminate, they have to go beyond that and reach out and identify what problems exist in their service area. And if they have a facility, maybe their main hospital, like Baptist is way up north, if they have an outlet somewhere in southeast Oklahoma City, they've got to reach out to that part of the community and find out what that community needs from a healthcare standpoint, and it's a requirement that they have to fulfill then and meet those needs. So, I know you do a great job, and I appreciate all your work. I just think there's even more areas than what we addressed today that identify areas that work against any type of discrimination. Thank you.
There is, Councilman, and thank you for mentioning that. It was included in the presentation, in my rendition, and I skipped over that evidently.
Okay. Any other comments specifically for Paula? All right. Any other comments, then? Thank you, Paula. Any other comments or questions relative to the ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Not necessarily a comment, but I did want to address a couple of things that I heard throughout the conversations. And the first one was the amount of $2 million. So, will someone please make sure we have that explained for everyone to understand what is and what is not?
Sure. So, we have funding that was put into our budget that was to do, help with three areas. It was Homelessness Task Force came back with many recommendations of how we address homelessness in the city. The Law Enforcement Policy Task Force, along with the Community Policing Working Group, had recommendations on improvements we can make in the police department. And then we had the Human Rights Commission Task Force. All three of those were, we knew we would have many recommendations that were coming that would have cost in our budget. The majority of those, I'm confident, the majority of those costs will be on the Homelessness Task Force recommendations and the Law Enforcement Policy Task Force recommendations. But we did include the funding to help with staffing for the Human Rights Commission, but it won't be $2 million. So, that was to address all of those. I mean, right now, our plan is to manage it through the Inclusion and Diversity Program, and then potentially have an additional staff member that will serve as that compliance officer. We're still evaluating that with our Human Resources Department, but it will be possibly at this point adding one staff member to be able to help manage that. But the Municipal Counselor's Office will provide staff for it as well. So, it will not be a $2 million cost. It'll be much, much lower than that.
Thank you for that clarification. I actually personally wanted to yield my time to one of our other co-chairs of this task force, Dr. Andrea Benjamin. And as she comes, if you will, Dr. Benjamin, we heard about this, about the survey. Will you please clarify the concerns and questions that were asked for that, and also your personal comments as far as the work that has been done for the past year and a half to two years, and where we are? And as a professor that is tenured at the University of Oklahoma, the experiences in the surveys that you have done prior to?
Sure. Thank you so much. Yeah, I heard a lot of people give their bona fides, saying, "I guess I will give mine." I hold a PhD from the University of Michigan, the number-one program in American politics in this country, specifically in race and politics. I have done numerous surveys, numerous studies, and by training, I am a social scientist. So, when we set out with this, I never had a question of, "We need a task, we need a Human Rights Commission. This is how." The question was, "Do we need a Human Rights Commission?" And so, with that, there's really two things going on here. One is the survey. The survey was, as people wanted to investigate on the Internet. It was funded by the Arnault Family Foundation. It was part of a research project. It was executed by Sooner Poll with over a thousand respondents. It was weighted to match our census and gender and economic data in this city. In my world, when I posted about that data, I had a lot of political scientists reach out to me. "That's a great sample. How did you do that?" We worked with a company that could do that. We didn't use an outside company. We used a local company to collect that data so that we could feel confident. Now, we've heard a lot, and to be fair, people did reach out to me and say, "What was with this data?" And I could not get a clear answer of what people wanted from the data. So, again, as a social scientist, I can give you a bunch of numbers. I don't know what you, like, what are you looking for? And I could not receive that answer. So, to sort of make it seem that we weren't being transparent, that's unfortunate. I believe in transparency, and as a social scientist, it is really important to me. Now, the data from that survey, which, again, if people have specific questions, I'll definitely be willing to meet with them and share with them, show that across various walks of life, people in this city do feel like they have experienced discrimination. And while it is important that, you know, we here are engaged and we are aware of various outlets that we can, you know, make those complaints and that we understand that process, the people in the survey were not aware of those processes, and they were not aware of how they would even file a complaint should they have them. So, if nothing else comes from this, I hope that what this body takes away is that we can have a process since nineteen seventy that has been amended in nineteen seventy-eight, but zero people using it lets me know that no one knows about it. So, how can we educate people? How can we let people know? That's, to me, would be at least something to think about, right? Because zero, that's not logical. That's not, that's not, that's not possible, that not one person has ever said, "I've experienced discrimination, and I know the exact process to do it," but has chosen not to do that. That's just not, that's not feasible in my social science mind. So, again, the data also said that people feel discriminated against. I've heard a lot of, you know, affinity groups and people making identity. Republicans were the number-one people to say that they had complaints. A lot of them, and I'm sorry, I should say, in the, in the open comments, people said that they had been discriminated against for their own political beliefs. So, to me, that says, that's a, that's a broad, that's a broad spectrum of people. It's not just one group of people, "Oh, we're so discriminated against." People say that that has happened to them. I take them for their word, given the way the survey was conducted and who conducted the data. And again, I don't have a problem, but to just ask, "Oh, what's the data?" The city didn't pay for the data. So, it's, I mean, why would you all have the data? It's not your, it's not your data. So, I think that's one thing. I think the other piece is keeping in mind that when we put together this task force, I mean, I do agree, I love civic engagement, and I'm glad that people are here to talk today. But when we put together this task force, I think people were very intentional about it being a cross-section of the city. And so, it was a diverse task force, different religions, different races, different socioeconomic backgrounds, genders, political ideologies, political affiliations. So, when I said, "We went to that task force," and the question was, "Do we need a Human Rights Commission in Oklahoma City?", that task force said yes. That is what they said. They did tons of research. People spent countless hours. City staff, you know, Ms. Jane, Ms. Rita, Jared, Ms. Debbie, Ms. Sharita, people spent countless hours to make sure that that was a transparent and well, you know, well-thought-out process. You know, I don't feel like I went into it thinking that the answer would be yes. I was very willing to hear that the answer was no. That is not what the task force recommended. And so, at various stages, we have come before this body, again, to present those recommendations, to present those findings, to share why we think it's important. Task force members have come here to say why they even recommended it. Again, that's across a variety of different backgrounds. That's not just one group of people. And so, to that, I would say, I'm very thankful that the city staff hung out with us. Stonecypher, you know, Councilmember Stonecypher Nice Hammond Stone, you've served on this task force with us. You gave up your time. You worked on it. I appreciate that. I appreciate every task force member that gave up their nights and weekends. The working group that I was in, they spent hours doing research on Human Rights Commissions, hours. They are not paid. And if this were to go forward, the people that would choose to serve on this commission, they too are not paid. That's a voluntary position. There's no staff, it's not costing millions of dollars. That's people giving their free time to serve towards a cause that they think is important to them. And I do hope that that is clear today to each one of you, that this is important to me. I wouldn't have spent over two years of my life on this if it wasn't. And so, again, while I'm thankful that people are here and engaged, the social science part of me, the activist part of me, the part of me that cares about my community wishes that this many people had been engaged two years ago. Because we could have, we could have talked, and again, to echo other people, to have that conversation, to hear from people, to hear what they want to, you know, to hear where they stand on that. That is important to me. Again, I'm so thankful that people gave their time. Again, the city staff in particular, they gave countless hours to this project. The task force members, countless hours to this project. They were patient with the process. Even when we didn't agree, the conversation was civil. We talked about it. We went back to the research. We had experts come in to tell us what the status of things was. So, I don't want people to think that we crafted this ten days ago. We started this in early June of 2020. It is July nineteenth of 2022. And people that know me through this process, this is what I study, this is what I do, and I jokingly thought that this would take ninety days. And here we are, two years later. So, you know, I am, you know, overwhelmed, overwhelmed that people are so opposed to something that I think can really help the city. But it doesn't matter what I think, because the task force thought it could help the city. And that's, and that's really why we're here today, because it wouldn't have made it this far. If the task force would have recommended no Human Rights Commission, I would be doing something else with my time right now, because there would have been no need for us to get to this point. So, keep in mind that the task force recommended the re-establishment of this body. Forty people that volunteer, are someone saying time to me? Because I don't have a time limit that I know of. So, right, so, you know, so that is really where we are at. Obviously, I support this ordinance. Countless meetings with people, you know, again, on the dais, individual meetings, countless time, countless, you know, effort to get to this point. So, I do support it.
Thank you for that. I appreciate you for being here and speaking to what we've heard and experienced. And I also want to thank the other task force members that were present and to say thank you for your comments. And I personally want to also thank councilmembers Hammond, Stone, and Stonecypher for spending your time. And I know personally, Councilmember Stone and I were on a few subcommittees, and we spent a lot of time in those subcommittees, getting knowledge and understanding what and how. getting knowledge and understanding what and how, and to see if this is necessary as far as what we just heard from Dr. Benjamin. We all want to say it's not necessary. You know, that, that's, that's the guise. We want to say, yes, we are officially in a place where these, these, these conversations are not needed. But clearly, with the diversity of the folks that were at this task force and said yes to be a part of this task force, felt different. They understood the experiences of the people that they also communicate with. And they communicated that with the unanimous vote of us moving forward in unison to say, yes, we agree that a task force is necessary to move forward for a commission. So, so those are the things that I carry in the conversation that I've had. And that's why I wanted to yield my time to Dr. Benjamin and thank her again for what she has said and spoken to because of the work, the underlying work that I knew she and our other co-chair, Mariana Adams, took to heart and did not take lightly. So I also want to send my gratitude to Ms. Mariana Adams for her tireless work in this effort as well, and to our city staff. So Ms. Rita, Mr. Jared, to Ms. Sharita, Ms. Jane, Ms. Debbie, all of those who have played a major role in this. Your work has not gone unnoticed. And I extend the deepest gratitude for you to do the work that you've done to ensure that our city and the task force of our city that was recommended in this task force, I might remind you, was brought forward by our mayor, not by me. It was brought forward by the mayor of our city. And as a co-chair of that task force, I am grateful to have served. So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, to have served on this task force. And again, I express my deepest gratitude to those who served alongside with me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Cooper?
Yeah. I'd like to echo the gratitude I just heard from Councilwoman Nice to Councilman Stone Cypher for your service, Councilman Stone for your service, Councilwoman Hammond for your service, Dr. Benjamin, and Seth, anyone who served on that task force for the last year and a half to two years, thank you. Because in some ways, this also feels like the conclusion of one chapter in the beginning of the implementation conversation, especially should this pass. But I mean, implementation of the other things, I want to say thank you again to anyone who served on Mayor Holt's law enforcement task force, which also took shape the same summer, and anyone who served on our community policing working group for my resolution that had six items on there. And I heard some of the items today from the people who spoke. And I come with you with what they used to call back in the day, the good news. Because six items in our resolution, one of those items was an alternative response to mental health calls. So for those of you who spoke about a concern regarding our city needing to invest in better access to mental health care, I come with good news. There will be, in fact, a mental health alternative. We've already committed, of the $2 million that City Manager Freeman spoke about, we will have an alternative response to mental health calls to address the mental health crisis which exists in our city, quite frankly, in our state. Because remember, and I say this as a former middle school teacher, Oklahoma is number one in trauma statistics. Number one. We are number one. All 50 states, Oklahoma is number one in adverse childhood experiences, meaning if you were to take a test of 1 to 10 items, did you experience domestic violence in your home, food insecurity in your home, sexual abuse, you name it. Once you get a score of three or higher on a scale of 1 to 10, I heard someone mention a test earlier, once you test, answer three or more on an ACE test, you are now set up as an adult, not just for mental health concerns, but physical health outcomes that are quite negative. That's true. Google right now, adverse childhood experiences in Oklahoma, and the data's right there. But the good news is, of those six resolution items, a mental health alternative is coming. And it's coming at the same time as 988 is rolling out. That's good news. One of the other items, hiring mental health workers and social workers to go out and respond to homelessness, building on what OKCPD had already set in motion with the homeless outreach team. But unfortunately for police, they had two to four officers to respond to homelessness for all 621 square miles. All 621 square miles of our home, only two to four officers, and I know them well by name, like Sergeant Felix Valades. And they need backup. And that's what this street outreach team will be able to do. So that's just some of the good news. I mentioned and began with gratitude. I'd like to send gratitude across the void today to someone I've never met. But I heard a lot of words today about Christianity. So I'd like to send, if he can hear me, wherever it is, my grandpa Abner, who passed away before I was born, the son of European immigrants, a Pentecost preacher. He preached during the time of Jim Crow segregation. These are stories I've learned from my mother, but unfortunately, I'll never get to talk to him about his faith. But his faith is why I am right here today. Because at a time of Jim Crow segregation in Arkansas, in Texarkana, Arkansas, where my mother is from, he defied church leadership, who told him that the races must sit separately together. You heard from a pastor earlier who's from Philadelphia. Philadelphia led the first sit-ins in this country, nonviolent peaceful sit-ins, when Richard Allen, a preacher, was invited to a white church to come speak the word of God. But the white people in that church said, sir, you have to go sit up in the balcony. Very, just like what's up there right now. They said, black people had to go sit up there because you're not equal. And all the white folk will sit below. He said, that's not right. And he prayed on it. This is Richard Allen, Google it, Philadelphia. And he left that church and created the AME Church, to which that pastor sitting right behind you is the present-day descendant of, and so is Rosa Parks. All of this is true, what I am saying. It's true. And my grandpa Abner's courage flows through me, because honestly, y'all, some of the words I heard today made me shake too. I heard people say that. It made me shake. It's scary. And let me tell you why it's scary. I mentioned police earlier. Two weeks ago, and you know, for the people who are upset that I'm speaking at length, that's okay. That's okay. I listened for two hours to so many people speak. I listened. And I'm asking you to listen to me as well. That's what a dialogue is. It's what I heard Sandino say earlier. We listen to one another. I heard a teacher speak, a teacher and a student. You go back and forth. You don't just authoritarian say the thing. You go back and forth. So my comments are based on what I heard you all say to me today, to this council. Please know that. Please also know, I'm happy to sit with coffee, for coffee with anyone. I have office hours, Tuesdays and Thursdays. I've had them since I took office. I'm happy to sit and listen and talk. That's dialogue. It's back and forth. Two weeks ago, I saw during Pride Month, OKCPD posted about two police officers who are openly LGBTQ. One of them serves in my ward. The comments were horrific, because people were like, your sexuality doesn't matter. You're right. It doesn't matter. It shouldn't matter. I'm so proud of those officers who serve, not just the one in Ward 2, but the ones who serve with honor and integrity. I am proud of them. And it was horrific to watch the young woman have to sit, I mean, her, my God, here she was. She signed up to serve and protect our city. And in the comments, people said, I don't care what your sexuality is. Why does this matter? Why are you bringing it here? I mentioned this story to tell you that for some of the people today, and I've heard previously say, they don't know why the commission disbanded. The article in 1996, when it disbanded, the article in the Oklahoman was called, "City Council abolishes HRC." And here was the quote from a council member. So I want to give you the exact reason. And I want you to hear that young police officer in your mind. Quote, "This issue has come time and time again before the council," Foshee said. Quote, "with the goal to give rights to the gays, the lesbians, the people who have had sexual changes, things of that nature. If the only way we can prevent it from coming back again and again is to do away with the commission, then that is what we need to do." That's why the commission disbanded. And here was the only other thing that's important from that article, too. In that article, only five, five cases had come to that commission dealing with sexual orientation and gender identity. The rest were related to race. So this was like a boogeyman, a scapegoat. So that's why it disbanded. They would rather get rid of the commission than admit that a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender person is a human being with access to constitutional rights. And speaking of constitutional rights, now keep that officer in your mind again. Keep that officer in your mind again. That was 2022. In 2003, until 2003, right here in the great state of Oklahoma, the state I am from, and I love and honored to serve, it was illegal to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender. Literally illegal. It was illegal until the United States Supreme Court with Lawrence versus Texas, that case, Lawrence versus Texas, said they were protected with constitutional rights. They are Americans. We are humans. And that's why I sleep in my bedroom with the Constitution right beside my bed. And in that Constitution, so help me, God, is also our Declaration of Independence. And also, and there's the oath of office I took, when I asked to take the oath on the Constitution and the Declaration. I asked to do that, because I am an American. I am a man. I am gay. I am a teacher. I am a neighbor. I am someone who knows Ward 2 so well that I will defend it until my dying day, because it is for everyone. It is for the list that Hitler was against, the workers, the women, the peace activists, the dissidents, the Jews, the Slavs, the Gypsies, the disabled, the Jehovah's Witnesses. These were the people that Hitler killed during Nazi Germany, when many of your parents and grandparents fought to defeat fascism and Nazis, because that's not the American way. This was the list. And this is the list I will always defend. I will always defend, like my grandfather, the least amongst us. That is who we are as Oklahomans. That is who we are as Americans. There has never been an LGBT person on this council, on this council until me. And that is why I am speaking the way I am about this topic right now. Ward 2 is for everyone, and OKC is for all of us. And we are united under this Constitution. I love everyone who spoke today. You might not believe me, but I love you. I love you. And we need more of that love, not this division. Please call my office. I will sit, and I will talk to you about Ann Hutchinson. I will talk to you about William Jennings Bryan. I will talk to you about Bayard Rustin. I will listen to you talk to me about Christianity, Islam, Judaism, Buddhism, atheism, you name it. Let's have a go at it. But what I will not do is sit in silence. So thank you for your time right now. That is why I am supporting this, because I know that we can do better. And that's it. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I just have a pretty quick, hopefully, comment. I'd like to just express why I am supportive of re-establishing this commission. And, you know, I think something that gets lost in this conversation, at least today, that I've witnessed, is the myriad of categories that are included in protecting discrimination against people with different immutable aspects of themselves. And one of those things that I always think about is disability, because so long I was raised with this idea of just like a physical model of disability. So if you need a wheelchair, if you need glasses, that that's just a physical attribute for you. And, and there's not really anything we should do structurally to address that. But over the last couple of years, I've learned of the, the description of a social model of disability. And that is one in which, not, in not very recent, or I guess in barely recent history, people didn't have access to wheelchairs. People didn't have access to mobility devices that helped them get around. So they were homebound. They did not have the same equal access to the world that people without those needs had. If I didn't have my glasses, I wouldn't be able to walk down the street and know where I'm going. But I have the access to those things. And I think about that in terms of access to public accommodations, access to housing, that something as simple as a ramp doesn't hurt me as someone who doesn't need a mobility device. I can still use that ramp, but it creates access for people who do need those mobility devices. And I think what we, again, what gets lost is that that same concept can translate to other immutable characteristics of people, that there are structures and there are systems that creating better access for a wider, a broader community doesn't take away from, from the access and the ability for other people. And I think if we're going to talk about the Constitution, that that is exactly what that document has been doing over the last, I can't do math, 250-plus years, is that it started out where I was property. But that's no longer the case. The Constitution doesn't recognize that anymore, that other people in this room were not seen as fully human. But things changed, things progressed, and, and due to the recognition that people have the right, this should have the same rights as others. And that does not take away from the rights of, of people who were included as fully human, included as not, not property in that, in that original document. And I think a commission like this can help educate the public. It can help make sure that people that are placed in the margins because of our systems, because of the way we build those systems to make it difficult to access for everyone, can access those things. And, and in my hope, would create an outlet for things that sometimes boil over and create division, but instead could be addressed in a productive, conciliatory, non-adversarial way. So I just wanted to express that to why I am supportive of this. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to speak.
Please, please.
So I just really want to talk about kind of the process that we've been through. First, I just really want to thank everyone, and I literally mean thank everyone that showed up today and gave your input. Not to mention all the phone calls yesterday and texts and emails and everything else. I really do appreciate it. And I really do enjoy listening to others and trying to understand their concerns and what the basis is of those concerns. And believe me, a lot of those concerns, I've had the exact same concerns. The one thing that I think we did get rid of today is when we talk about the fiscal impact of this, it's minimal. It's going to be from zero to a half an employee. That's something, to me, as someone that's fiscally conservative, is very important. You know, as we, as was previously mentioned, we've been on this ride for two years, two and a half years, feels like five years. And there were a lot of different facets. And there were a lot of different facets that came up. And a lot of those facets, I'll tell you, initially raised big concerns with me because I felt like there were a lot of different calls for action coming from a lot of different directions. And trying to meld those into something that could work, you know, it took a long time. When the process was nearing completion, Councilman Stonecypher, I think, did a couple of key things there. One, we went through and really tried to model it to ensure that it followed state and federal law. So that there wasn't, so can I talk? I know you've got to talk. I just want to talk. There were a lot of things there that we wanted to make sure that it followed law so that if we did pass this, it wasn't going to be immediately preempted. And I think that was very important. And then we also talked about the other remedies that exist, the higher remedies that do exist. And, you know, thank you for the presentation today, having the presentation put on. I think it's very important that people do understand that there are other remedies that exist. So when I started looking at this commission, it kind of dawned on me that this commission doesn't need to be a policy board. It doesn't need to be a policing board. That isn't the purpose of this commission, in my mind. The purpose of this commission is to really to educate citizens on many things that we do, we constantly do. We always want to improve. And when we, when we talk about the betterment of this city, we really try to talk about the betterment of this city for everybody, not just us. Don't worry about me. I'll be fine. Let's make sure that we rise the level of this city for everybody. And I hate to see those left behind, especially our youth. I mean, let's make sure that we are trying to take care of those and that as this city progresses and continues to flourish, everyone has the opportunity. Now, they may not take that opportunity or not, but I want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity to be successful for themselves and their families. So this commission, I see it as more of an educational thing. I see it as if they explore things and thinks that there may be issues that the city is overlooking, that they can bring those to the attention of council. But they're not a policy board. They're not a policing board or anything of that nature. You know, I've, I've served my country. Tried to serve my city. Some of you may think I do well at that. Others may think I'm a big failure. But I'll promise you this. I do my best, and I try to listen to everybody that I can. We've done two years' worth of work on this thing. And I see it as it could be a real positive. And I think others look at it from a totally negative standpoint. And I won't lie, for a while, I looked at it completely that way, too. But finally, it started to shift in my mind that, okay, what can we do? What can I do to try and make this a positive change? Not a negative change, a positive change. And that's all I would ask for people to think is to say, okay, how could this happen? And we possibly think that it could be positive for Oklahoma City? And that is where really we're at today. And, you know, ultimately, I'm going to have to support it. And I apologize to you, those of you that disagree with me. And I can't tell you, you know, I hate to disappoint people. But, you know, I've got to vote with my heart. So WWJD.
Mayor, may I just say quickly, you know, with the attention that this committee was developing over the past couple of years, I was anticipating speakers to come forward sharing personal accounts of their human rights being violated. I didn't see that. So I went out and requested staff to obtain minutes of the other cities that were in the pure cities, I guess is what the term is, to get minutes of their meetings to see what kind of civil, human rights violations were occurring in some of the other cities. And there were none, none that would fall under the purview or domain of this committee. I recognize human rights are being violated daily. We're on a path to perhaps set records in terms of the number of murders occurring in Oklahoma City. That's a violation of human rights. Assaults are violations of human rights. Human trafficking are violations of human rights. There are many violations of human rights going on. But those don't fall under the purview of this committee. Those are all criminal actions. And we've got our local police department, county, state, federal law enforcement agencies addressing those matters. And then as Mark and our legal staff very nicely pointed out, any other areas of discrimination are already being covered by various agencies. So what does that leave? And as some of the speakers this morning pointed out, that leaves interpersonal communications, actions to be, fall under the purview of this committee. I think we'd be wasting our time trying to adjust the way individuals think or act in interpersonal activities. It just can't be done. If you're solely looking at an education process, you don't need the city of Oklahoma City. This group could go down to the Secretary of State's office this afternoon, file articles of not-for-profit incorporation, and be up and running tomorrow, having workshops. Having workshops, presentations. They could appoint whomever they wanted to on the board, whomever they wanted to, to committees without any oversight, without any intervention by the city council. It's not necessary. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments from council? Seeing no other comments, we could accept a motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes five to four. I echo the gratitude that was expressed to staff and the task force and this council for all of its work over the last two years. And per Article 2, Section 254 of the now-adopted Human Rights Commission ordinance, I'll move forward with appointments, but in consultation with each of you regarding your council-specific, or I should say, your ward-specific appointments. So no huge rush, but do feel free, each of you, to share names with me or a name with me in the weeks ahead. Thank you again to everyone who came today. I don't, I don't think we're doing the emergency. Yeah, no. All right. So item, next item is 11L. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for those previously struck. We have one resident who signed up to speak, and that is Michael Washington. Mr. Washington is not in the room.
He's not present. And if I will.
Has anyone else signed up to speak for this public hearing?
Mayor.
Yes.
If you will, if I can defer Item B for, give me two weeks.
All right. Item B deferred for two weeks is the request. Let's handle that with a motion. This is 11L1B. Motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Okay. Any other business on that?
No one else signed up.
Then we can advance to the resolution found at L12, declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11M is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. We have one resident who has signed up to speak. That is Michael Washington, but he is not in the room. Has anyone else signed up to speak, Amy?
No, they haven't.
And that item from the past is not on here, correct? Did we just defer? No, I do not see it. So we can move on, close the public hearing, move on to Item 11M2, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured except for those struck earlier. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. 11N is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
Does this have that item? It does not. Okay. So we can close the public hearing and advance to the resolution found at 11N2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned Are we, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, it didn't come up, but I would like to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Item 11O, this is the item that was deferred from June 21st and July 5th to consider this filed appeal of an action taken by the Traffic and Transportation Commission on May 16th. I know Councilwoman Nice is interested in this item at being in Ward 7, but she has stepped away. Why don't we maybe see if we can knock out a few other things and come back to this while the city manager looks for her? Item P1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for firefighter Trent Waters. While he continues to require rehabilitation, executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. This is on Item P1, salary continuation. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we'll back up to Item O. I had already kind of described it, Councilwoman Nice, but are you wishing to proceed today?
Yes, we can. And I apologize, I couldn't hold it any longer. I'm sorry. I just couldn't. I mean, I tried, you know, I tried. I mean, hey, since we're all being open today, let's, why not? I have a couple of comments. And I did speak to Ms. Dunlap. So there were a couple of concerns that I want to make sure, and I promised her that I would at least speak to and ask those questions openly that she had. And the unfortunate part to Ms. Dunlap is she is unable to be with us today. And as we've kind of heard previous comments as to just whatever the case may be of restrictions, barriers, limitations, whatever it is. But she was able to exercise her right through writing as far as this appeal is concerned. So one of the things that she mentioned to me was the fact that she expressed that the summary showed no reason of a traffic stop sign for the area. She also expressed to me that the street sign has been changed in front of her, of her house and now says Fifth Street when, in actuality, she lives on Sixth Street. So there are a couple of things in caveats as we move forward with this. So I did express to her I would foremention those in, as we go through this discussion. One of the things that happened last week in my own backyard was a fatal accident due to the lack of stop signs. I've never, in my whole life, living in this neighborhood, experienced a serious accident. I've had, I've had one accident driving, turning into my street. I've had my own accident of that nature. But to experience, because of the lack of a stop sign, a 36-year-old young man ejected from his vehicle to never see and experience life again after the lack of a stop sign, that resonated with me more now than ever. And that's the unfortunate part of, in the irony, actually, of this conversation, quite frankly. And I know Ms. Dunlap has expressed her urge to not have this stop sign. She has also expressed that it is political in that the neighbors are against her or seem to not take interest in her concern about this stop sign. Maybe I should say that. As we see with the petition, the neighbors did go through the neighborhood. And we have residents that have agreed. And you also see the ones that said no. So there were some that also expressed their disregard for the approval of such stop signs to control all the way that we stop on this particular area. And as I did mention, too, we are working to now fill that seat with the lack of a Ward 7 traffic commissioner. So with this, this has taught me personally the method of being able to petition for our stop signs in our community. And I do want to thank our traffic department because I do now understand personally for my neighborhood that an immediate yield sign has been added due to the fatality that we experienced last week. But the response that took place, and with, again, Ms. Dunlap not happy about the growth in this particular part of our neighborhood as far as everything that has been built. So I understand the bad conversation of why she is against these stop signs. So while I understand her appeal, I have made sure that I addressed her concerns in, for this and for, as we've heard prior in other conversations, the safety of our residents. It seems befitting that we continue to, to keep this stop sign for now. So as far as the appeal is concerned, I do not want us to consider the appeal.
So this was a new one on me, an appeal to a traffic commission. So I was just, okay. So what we think is necessary here, first of all, so you said that the appellant is not here, correct?
He is, she is not. She is watching from home.
So there is no real, yeah, there's no real case to be made. You just expressed kind of both sides. So all that's left is to, we do, I think, have to take some action. So we think the action, and you cleared this with Kenny, is to move denial of the appeal to where we will vote yes if we wish to deny the appeal.
Exactly.
So we just had to work through the double negatives. But it's, we're going to be voting yes, if that is the motion, to deny the appeal.
And Mayor, if we deny the appeal, the stop sign will be placed there.
The signs are currently there.
Oh, they're already there.
Have not been removed. So this process of her application would remove those signs. But I'm asking that we move forward to deny the appeal.
So what we do is we vote yes to affirm what the traffic commission did in allowing the stop sign.
Correct. Your yes vote is support of the traffic commission and a denial of the appeal.
On the note, I'm sorry, just the only other clarification. You mentioned that the number of her street was off. Has that already been resolved?
To my knowledge, no. And that is something that I will look into to see how we can make sure that that is corrected for her.
We'll have, we'll have staff check into that.
Thank you.
And I should add, in the interest of fairness, a no vote is to support the appeal and to reject a motion of denial. Okay. Can you bring up that motion? All right. We have a motion in a second to deny the appeal. Cast your votes.
I'd like to further complicate things. You're welcome, Todd. You are welcome. You are so welcome. But in my defense, I didn't do it. It's the technology, the screen's frozen. So I'd like to vote yes.
Okay. That wasn't so bad. All right.
Got it.
All right, denial of the appeal passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we already did item P, so we are at item Q1. This is a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 157, retroactive to July 1st. This feels like the earliest we've ever gotten this done, it's certainly close, and I am told executive session is not requested, but I'm sure if there's any questions or comments, the city manager can handle those, but otherwise, he's ready for you to approve this agreement. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, then we have a couple items to go into executive session, we'll take those votes and then handle that at the end of our other business. So the first one up is item R, enter new executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for this fiscal year with the FOP and AFSMI. I want to note that, just kind of out of routine, IAFF was listed on here,
Yes.
but there's no intention of discussing that
That's right.
as that agreement was just approved. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11S, enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications from our attorney regarding a possible settlement in the case of Lamar, the State of Oklahoma, City of OKC, hearts for hearing a tal. And again, we will just take a vote to go into executive session and handle this at the conclusion of our other business. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11T is claim recommended for, claims recommended for denial, executive session is not requested. We have items A and B, we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11U, one, our claims recommended for approval, executive session is not requested. We could take items U1, A and B, with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Mayor, my
Okay, how do you wish to vote?
Yes, please.
Councilman Greenwell wishes to be recorded as aye, or yea in this case. Councilman Stonecypher, have you?
Oh, Nice, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Nice?
She, you wish to be recorded as an aye, you got her? Okay. Passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes our votes for the day. I have to step away, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Cooper, who will handle it from here, and of course, we are now at comments from council, and I will give you the slips for those residents who wish to speak. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, you're in charge.
All right. But there are things, go ahead, oh, so
I'll start.
Okay, go ahead, do you have comments from council?
I actually just wanted to take a minute and thank Chad and his team, a lot of times they had the thankless job of doing what they do, and going around town and helping clean up and keeping our city looking good. And actually, to a good friend of mine by the name of Joey Chapel with his group Open Vessels, who is out every single day helping Chad and his team on a nonprofit aspect of whether people need help cleaning it up, mowing their yards, moving trash, or just helping move from one apartment to the next. And he uses a group of gentlemen out of a couple of our sober living homes who want to volunteer their time, and so I just wanted to give a real good, quick shout out to Open Vessels, Hope Center, and Chad and his team for all that they do, day in and day out, and don't really ever receive thanks or that recognition, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you, councilman. Go for it. From my end, I'll just say, happy birthday to Councilwoman Nikki Nice. I've already said this on social media, so she knows how I feel. And the only other thing is, I am nothing if not consistent, Nikki. I've ordered your gift, and it will be late. So it's on its way, it's in the mail, so, but just thank you for your friendship. On July 26th, Ward 2, and you can find more information about this on social media as well, but on July 26th at 7:00 PM, in fact, specifically from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, I'm hosting a community meetup at Royal Rogers Park. There is the, I believe it's the Exhibition Center is what it's called? Yes, the Exhibition Center just west of I-44 on Northwest 36th Street. I'm very excited about this, because I'm not really a big town hall person. Instead, the format will be as follows. For the first 20 minutes, I'm going to introduce city staff, representatives from departments, so police will be there, planning will be there, city manager's office will be there, Embark representatives will be there, parks will be there, MAPS4 will be there, Public Works will be there, we'll have folk there to talk about homelessness, and I'll introduce them, I'll say some comments, and then what I think's going to be really cool is for about 45 minutes to an hour, you as a resident will have an opportunity to meet one-on-one at individual tables for the various departments. You can ask them questions about upcoming better street, safer city, projects coming to your neighborhood or around your neighborhood, MAPS4 projects, any of the different public safety proposals and their implementation that's coming in front of us, strategies that we're using to address homelessness. You're welcome to kind of skip me, the middleman, and go right to the city department, because that's why I ran. I ran to better connect you to your city government. I really want to thank all the departments who are going to be taking time out of their evening next week to join us. So again, that is Tuesday, July 26th, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, come get your questions answered. And then, not that that wasn't serious, but on very serious topic, I've invited Assistant City Manager Aubrey McDermid to address the council and give us an update. As you all know, we had a fairly historic fire take place at the Canton Development earlier this year, and I've asked Assistant City Manager McDermid to speak to what the resolution's looking like right now, now that the fire has concluded its investigation, so.
Sure, happy to provide an update. And I'm Assistant City Manager Aubrey McDermid, and I have the Development Services Department, so what I'm going to be reporting on is where we are with code enforcement process and the status of the cleanup of this. And as you mentioned, it was a pretty unprecedented fire in terms of size, scale, and magnitude. Typically, we don't have things like that, that have large delays for things like a fire investigation or insurance, so this one was delayed in that the owner could not get on the site to perform the cleanup until certain activities had happened. So just to recap what the status is right now, is on June 15th, we, the fire department did release the site for full cleanup to the owner. On June 27th, code enforcement issued a notice of violation, and this was for clearing the junk and debris, and they set a site to re, a date to re-inspect the site for July 13th. So since the owner really just started initiating cleanup prior to that, they reported to us right before the first inspection date, that they had hired a contractor, that the contractor would be deployed in the next two weeks. So the other key date here is that July 1st was kind of the trigger for the owner when the official fire investigation was released. So on July 12th, the property owner gave us an update that they expect the removal to commence within two weeks, so we should be within the timeframe where we should start to see some work happening on the site to clean it up. In the meantime, code enforcement's going to monitor the progress on the site, and they've set a re-inspection date for September 1st to make sure things are moving. Because we do have issued that notice of violation for the debris and cleanup, there is an accountability factor on the city side to make sure that that work is happening. If things are not happening and not progressing, we typically try to work with the property owner if they're making concerted efforts to get the site cleaned up. But it can progress beyond that if the property owner is not responding in terms of issuance of violation or a citation. The other action that could follow that is declaring the site dilapidated. It's obviously further than dilapidated, it's actually junk and debris at this point because it's completely burned down. So that action is really not the fundamental necessary action that we need to pursue, it's making sure that the cleanup occurs. So we're confident that the owner has said they really want to get that done, and they've hired people, so we should be seeing some action on that. We're happy to see that, starting in the next couple of weeks. And we can keep you posted on that, and code enforcement is going to go by once a week and check on it.
That's great. Thank you for walking us through that. So I know we're going to be, if necessary, heading back out there September 1st, but let's say two weeks from now, we find that no action has happened there. Again, I have anxiety, so I'm just imagining the worst-case scenario for us. What would happen right then?
We, yeah, and we have been in contact with the owner, and, you know, the company that's been hired to do that demolition is going to be in contact with the owner about when they can deploy their crews to go out and start the cleanup, so we'll make sure that we can find out when to expect that cleanup to start.
Okay. But again, like what happens two weeks from now, if nothing?
By September 1st, if they haven't started, we can proceed to the next step of issuing, you know, a citation for it and move through the process. And if I've said anything wrong, we've got our chief conductor, Chad Davison, here in Rickwick in camp as well, they want to add anything?
Well, I appreciate you, Assistant City Manager, and I appreciate Chad and code enforcement for their work, city manager, you as well. To the residents who live near there, I share your frustration and your concerns. I drive, I mean, I'm not the sort of city council person who doesn't know their ward, like I, it's like the back of my hand how much I'm around the rest of that ward, and that's an area where I do grocery shopping. And so, once a week, I see that area, and it reminds me of the earthquakes of the early 90s in Los Angeles. So I share your frustration, please know, and I'm just speaking for me, not for the city, as the council person, I have deep frustration with the private entities that, in my mind, could have gotten to this quicker. And I am glad that the city has done what we could to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and trying to make sure that accountability and responsibility falls on the responsible parties. So, thank you for the update, I'll look forward to seeing this cleanup happen soon. And with that, I would turn to if there are any Ward 3 comments?
Any.
Ward 4?
I don't see Ward 5.
We don't see Ward 5. Ward 6?
Yes, I would just like to mention two things. One is next Thursday, July 28th, OKC Beautiful is hosting their, they, I think, maybe last year was the first year they did it, I might be wrong about that, but it's sort of, appears to be an annual sort of open house party for the Bulldog Garden at Cleveland Elementary. This is such a neat program that, I know it's technically in Ward 2, but there's a lot of overlap, I have a lot of families that live in the area that, whose children participate in this program as part of their attendance at the elementary school, and this event is just an opportunity to come tour the garden, there's going to be food activities, a raffle, and it's just a really neat opportunity to see how investment in things like community gardens and the staff to keep them up can foster that sense of community for a neighborhood, kind of the broader community, even for those who don't have kids, that come and help out and participate to help keep everything going. So if anyone that's watching is interested in attending, it will be hot, but they're going to have, I know last year they had a little lemonade stand, and just a really great opportunity to meet neighbors in the area. And the other thing I'd like to mention, given that it's been so hot and will continue to be really hot, I had seen that Embark posted about the cool zones that are throughout the city and throughout the region, on their Facebook page is along with information about how you can use Embark buses and other services to get to those areas, and I just really want to encourage anyone who needs that, if they're having trouble with their air conditioning at home and not being able to stay cool, many of those are libraries, there are other community centers throughout the city where they can go mostly during daytime hours, hottest part of the day, to stay cool and get out of this really bad heat, because we know that prevention is better than intervention, and if we can keep you cool and lower the amount of 911 calls for heat exhaustion and those sorts of things, just want to help make sure people are safe. So you can go to Embark's website, you can call 405-235-RIDE, and they can give you more information about those, and just really appreciate Embark for helping promote that and helping promote how people can get to those locations.
Thank you, Ward 7?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to, I have a few things I wanted to mention. First, on this past Friday, I was able to attend the newest recruit class for our Oklahoma City Fire Department, 22-1, or 22-, I hope I'm right, 22-1? Is it 2? 22-1? I thought it was -1.
I know, we did.
Okay, I know I'm right. But the reason I wanted to foremention this particular, this particular class is for two reasons. One, this is the most diverse class I've ever seen, especially with the addition of women. I believe there were at least four, maybe five, women that have been added to our police, our fire department, excuse me, and also the diversity of our African-American population to our department as well, which is, this is the most diverse class I've ever seen, and I've been to police academy graduations, and I've also been to fire recruit graduations, and I was extremely proud to witness what I saw on Friday. The other reason I'm extremely proud is because one of my dear friends I grew up in church with was one of the recruits that graduated, and I come, I found out when he was about to graduate that he was even in this class, and the fact that he tried to become a part of the recruit class six years ago, and was not successful, but he continued the journey to make sure that he was ready when the time was right for him. So I am extremely excited about his future and what he's going to do, and I told him I would shout him out today, and that is recruit Eric McHenry. And so if, I know he's probably like, why does she do that? He's at Station 16, and he starts tomorrow. So very excited about that. Last week, we also were able to tour the Pivot tiny homes, they had their open house, and just grateful for the work that Pivot does, and also for the vision of Marcus Uday, who helped to lay the foundation for how those tiny homes have been built, and just the love that Pivot puts into what they do, and for those young people to have their own privacy and residence, and to not be ashamed of where they live, and to have shelter, that's the most important part of that. Yesterday, we were able to join our county commissioners and Commissioner Blumer with a tribute to the late Willa D. Johnson, and I really appreciate her for inviting me to be a part and to listen to her read that resolution in honor of Ms. Johnson, and the legacy that she left, not only with our city, but also with our county. So very grateful that we were able to honor her and her son to be in attendance with that. We also have, I wanted to thank the seniors in Spencer. I got to hang out with a brunch with them on this past Friday as well, and they had nine seniors that were over 90 in this area and city around Spencer, and the oldest one will be turning 100 next month. So just to see and put my eyes and lay eyes on those seniors, it was very, a very gratifying experience to be with them. And I just want to thank the Marriott Gardens last week. If you have not been on this Full Moon Bike Ride, you should. It's six to eight miles, but it is an experience, if you haven't enjoyed it, but it also allows you to see our city, our trails. While I didn't make it past two miles, I enjoyed the experience. It was a very fun experience, and there were so many people that also took part, I had no idea of the culture of people on these bikes that enjoy our city in the way that they do. And I also wanted to commend our IMSA, our fire department, and our police department for the fatal accident that did happen in my neighborhood on Thursday. for the fatal accident that did happen in my neighborhood on Thursday. Captain Strecker was present. I didn't know he knew who I was, but he asked me if there was anything that he could do, and I appreciate that. But I also appreciate my neighborhood and my neighbors because we all came together at that time to rally around each other to understand what happened and to know that that's not something we want to happen again in our community. So very unfortunate, the young man that is no longer with us. But hopefully now we'll work towards making sure this doesn't happen again. And as we, we talk through what just took place today in the vote, I'd be remiss, I apologize that I did not appreciate the words of Senator Young for being with us today and really just speaking the thoughts in the presence of, of what is happening, quite frankly, in our country that we experience. And I also, I pity, I pity our council member that I sit next to for Ward 8 because of us going through this process and talking to the other members, co-chairs, and saying that he wanted to add teeth to this ordinance and resolution and still decided to say that it doesn't have any and not support it. That is very shameful and it's very unfortunate that we have to go through that process and instead of actually talking to the councilpeople that we should be able to have dialogue and discussion about these said things. So again, I pity that because it's very sad that we have to entertain the conversations of others instead of doing the right thing. And I will close with that.
I'm so sorry you feel that way, Vice Mayor. I want to say that I want to thank all the citizens that participated in this event today. I thought it was wonderful. I thought it was meaningful. I thought it was engaging. I thought it was the right thing that we go through this process, and I hope we can do it more often. So with that, I think it makes it a better city for us. And again, thank you for everyone that participated today.
Thank you, Ward 8 councilperson. Thank you, Ward 7 as well. Am I missing something? Are we ready to go to executive session? Oh, close, so close. Michael Washington has signed up to speak, but I do not see Mr. Washington. Okay. Reverend Legg has signed up to speak. Reverend? There we go. And then Reverend, you'll have three minutes to speak. And please state your name and address for us. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Paullet Legg. I live at 1918 Northeast 44th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. And I'd like to start with the quote that I have mentioned here before, by President Nixon. And who moved my phone off of where I was? The whole problem is really the blacks. And the key is to devise a system that recognizes this while not appearing to. It was a quote by Richard Nixon, your 37th President of the United States. And what callous, malignant ideology stemming from an outrageous desperation, no doubt. At any rate, words of a dangerous mind, I assure you. I propose to you that America entirely, not only in Mississippi, Georgia, Virginia, New York, Alabama, Texas, California, and this red with bloody soil of Oklahoma, yea, that of this entire nation, being instituted and established on this elected practice by this entire nation, establish, adopt it, and liberally implements this practice in every aspect and component, in every society, community, in every one of the 52 states of America. This very distorted view and platform of Nixon's and many others, even the founding fathers and those who would serve in high places, like you people, in the places of social ordering, to this day practice this methodology.
30 seconds, please.
Yes, of course, even today, America is known throughout the world to be the purgatory of racial injustice intentions and a nation based on a foundation that is hell-bent and a hellhole of American true democracy, America whose very life, breath, and existence, the Constitution, embattles itself. And I submit to you will soon be chiseled away to a memory. We are a dying nation that could be saved. We're decaying from within due to corruption, greed, pride, violence, and lies upon lies upon lies about racial injustice, vile insensitivities, and because we are unrepentant. Madam Timekeeper, you are advised that you have been inconsistent today with your timekeeping as I take my seat.
And I believe that is all the citizens who have signed up to speak. With that, we will move into executive session. All right. We spoke into the gavel. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.